For the prior to endorsement, now, once they file these, the next step will be your next set of criteria in the decision, prior to permits.
Yes, if you'd stand and identify yourself with the record, please.
My name is John Hershey. Are you addressing the easements on this piece of property tonight?
We are not.
You're not? Is that in your charge going forward, or not?
It is not. Title record is not something that's in our charge.
It's not? Is it gonna be in the going forward?
It is not. We're endorsing the plans, so... And I'm sorry, did you identify?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is John Hershey.
And where do you reside, Mr. Hershey?
65 Hershey Street. Because I see this on TV, and I was down the sewer meetings last Tuesday night, and as far as easement goes on the property and before the property, there needs to be some language in there, and ownership, and so on and so forth. So I'm just wondering, and they told me that's not their charge, it's your charge. So I just wanna make sure all the checks and balances are done. That's all I'm here for tonight. That's all. The easements on the property, is everything satisfactory?
We've had our review people review it, and they're satisfied. We voted on this previously to me. We're just endorsing the plan tonight. So our consultants have reported back to us that they're satisfied.
Well, okay, on your charge, is that from the end of Lewis Court to the whole property? Is that within your charge, or not?
If I may, as part of the approval process, there was a title certification provided to the planning board to answer some of the questions that the board had identified, even though title issues are not within the purview of this board. So we have a report within the file regarding the title that was provided by the applicant, and the planning board has accepted that.
Well, I mean, it says on the end of Lewis Court to the property, it says John R. Hershey, so that's not a concern. Well, that's okay. Well, I'll deal with that later. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just did wanna ask if I could, John, specifically on the plan, what is the area of concern? Is it something to do with Lot A? Is it something to do with Lot B?
No, no, no. It's on Plan B. And you can see it right here. Please, don't ask me the problems because I have to pay 20 cents. I love that cat with five dollars a soy or a little bit of... You can take a look right here. It says John R. Hershey, so...
Is there a signature required, or is there something missing in terms of the file?
Yes, because you can't grant easement over in easement.
Is the John R. Hershey that, in a relationship to you, that's father? So this is, this was deeded to him, and then you have an easement over it? Has this been vetted with everybody?
Well, this is, the hearing's closed, so we voted on that. So I think Mr. Hershey's made the record as concerned, but this has been voted, and I've endorsed the plan. So, thank you.
That's fine. I can go along with that, because it's really having to resolve something on the lights, if you wanted to go to the state tonight, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is the Notre Dame Training School, Inc., 1073 Main Street, site plan review under section II and 3B.8 of the zoning bylaw, subject to, with the benefit of the provisions of MGL, Chapter 48, Section 3. Think that's you, Mr. Tachio?
Yes.
Thank you.
How are you?
Excellent, thank you.
Hi, y'all. Jeff Tachio, I represent Notre Dame Training Academy. And we're, I believe, it's the second one meeting before you folks. You'll remember, as part of the site plan review, we were before the Conservation Commission, and we were dealing with the drainage and conservation issues. They have voted in order of conditions already, so we're pleased to report that. And timing is right for us to come in before you folks again, give you an update as to where we are on several issues. We understand that you don't necessarily have the full board this evening, but it's a good opportunity for us to come in, touch base, let you know where we are, also see if there are any additional questions. We've had some contact from Town Council concerning a few issues that we have, and we're going through some of those now. And with that said, we also have some responses to Mr. Chessia's comments. And Arthur Eddy is here from Birchwood, and he can go through some of those questions if you'd like. And also, one of the other issues that came up recently is that we're meeting with Father Quinn of Resurrection Church. There was a 1997 shared parking agreement that was relied upon, for example, as part of the 2004 expansion of Notre Dame Academy into what they call the science wing. And that's a part of that decision. Again, that was 1997, so it was some time ago. And then what's happened since then, I know that Father Quinn had expressed some concerns, whether, you know, it was still in play, what the responsibilities were for various costs. And we actually reached out to them, and we'll be sitting down with them to discuss how that parking agreement goes into the year 2015, and then goes forward. So we don't have anything specific to report on that. We'll be meeting with him later this week. In the interim, however, you folks will have a large event parking plan. You'll recall that last time we came in, Chief Pereno was the chief at that time, and we have reported our discussions concerning the use of the fields for sporting events. And then what we term "large" events, in late April, there's a track and field event, which is the largest event for the school that they run. And aiming at that, and what the history of the use has been, we use that to actually formulate, articulate a plan going forward. Mrs. Savage Dunham asked if we would reduce that to writing, and also meet with Chief Olson and get his input. So the copy that you folks have is an articulation of the discussions that John Morgan of CHA had with Chief Olson. And Chief Olson has, you know, basically said, yes, that's what we discussed. One point on the bottom that you'll note is that, and then Ms. Murphy also brought this up, was to be sure that we get just an agreement from the school department, because the middle school, for example, is used as potential bus overflow if the bus drivers with their empty buses need somewhere to go for a few hours to clear some of the lot. They typically will go over with notice, telephone notice, to the school department. And the recommendation was that we get some recognition or acknowledgement from the department that that's something which is permitted by them, and, you know, we can certainly do that as well. Other than that, we also were asked to look at some of the photometrics with respect to the lighting. If you'll remember, we did have some spillage that was going back to the west over where the wetland, you know, the wetland resources are. There are no neighbors over in that area, but it was obvious that we could tighten that area up. And Art Eddy's gone through, and they've redesigned the lights, made different changes with very, very good photometric foot candles. And I'm gonna ask if he can go through that with you folks briefly tonight, if that makes sense for you. And then finally, there were comments concerning the sound system. You'll remember that currently what they do is they use portable speakers, and then they could have, for example, a bullhorn, something of that nature. So it's more organic to the spot, and it's something which, you know, changes where it's at if somebody's walking around with some type of amplified handheld system. Our original proposal was to put speakers in the sign, the fix sign scoreboard, if you would, which would be in the northwest corner, kinda up where Dr. Schreier's yard of butts. And there were questions about whether that sound would reflect off of the back of the school. So the west side of the school, as we all know, is a couple of stories, and it's smooth brick with glass, so it's, you know, a pretty good reflective area. So what we've actually done is we've gone out and respeced a much more sophisticated system where we have speakers, higher quality, smaller, with different computerized controls to be able to modulate sound. And those are actually proposed to be mounted up on the light poles, some distance above the ground, not pointing towards the school. So we actually were able to eliminate the reflectivity off of the school. We have a sound report which was put together, and you folks have that. That sound report, if you look at it, as far as the ambient sounds, the projected sound, if you put it down next to the Kavanaugh Tachi reports for the high school, it's eerily familiar. And I think you can pretty quickly put it down and notice that the sound parameters for that, they're very, very good, very sophisticated, very good. So we've got that. We don't have anyone here that can speak to that this evening, but it's something that you can take a look at, and if we need to discuss it further, we can certainly do that. If you folks don't have any housekeeping questions for me right now, what I do is I'd ask Art Eddy if he could touch on the photometrics, and even if you would, some of the comments that Mr. Chessia had, if you want those answered in a broader brush, and then depending on how much depth you want, if you wanna have Mr. Chessia weigh in, we can do that as well. All right. And with that, Art Eddy from Birchwood.
Great, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Arthur Eddy from Birchwood Design Group. Just to cover a couple of the quick comments, and some, as Jeff mentioned, some broad brush items. The discus throwing area to the north, we met with the neighbors. They actually requested to meet with us. And one of the things that we did to the discus area and the throwing north in the plans that we'll be sitting tonight is, we've actually reduced the discus area from 170 feet to 150 feet. The reason we were able to do that was, it will be just for girls' throwing. So the large event, they'll still throw on the front fields, but it'll allow them to still have a girls' event which fits within that. So we're pulling it back 20 feet. What that allowed us to do is eliminate the north wall. So now there's only a three-foot wall on the side where we had kind of a six-foot wall on the corner. That wall's been pulled back significantly. You'll see that in the revised plans. There were some questions regarding the parking spaces along the concession stand. There were two parking spaces that we were removing. We just reconfigured that area and added the two parking spaces back. So when you see that, we're actually not reducing any of the parking in that area. There was a question about refuse. There are two existing dumpsters on the grass. We're just relocating those dumpsters into a trash enclosure. We're not adding new dumpsters or expanding the trash pickup. We're just trying to kinda clean up that area. The building is coming down, the existing building, which is a storage building. It's 1,000 square feet. It's just over 1,000 square feet. And what's going back is a 685-square-foot concession slash restroom building. So we're significantly reducing the size of the building that's there. And actually, there's storage within that building, and then the storage that was used is gonna be distributed throughout the site into the building, and then to some storage units that we've located around the track. Jeff mentioned lighting. Again, just a quick, a quick run-through lighting. As we do athletic lighting, obviously, the higher the lights, the more concentrated we can do the distribution. If we lower the lights, that's what you can see on the left side of the board, is, you know, obviously, if we can lift those lights up higher. So we have the lights at 80 feet. That allows for a concentrated area. If you look at the sequence, the top left square, you can see it's just an aerial. The bottom left square is if we didn't have high distribution on that light. You can see the spillage into the neighborhood. And then the upper right section is actually that controlled light when we have high lights, and also directed hoods on the lights. And so what we end up with, as you can see in the bottom right, is all the light is concentrated on the field, so much so that even on the far side of the field, you can't even see the track in the distance. Even on this side, you can't see the track in the distance.
I'm sorry, did you say how tall those light poles are?
How tall? Yeah, they're 80 feet. Yeah. So this is the light distribution. You can see the concentration, obviously, the red being the most prominent areas of light down to yellow. Those are gradients of foot candles in five-foot candle increments. The gray is a one-foot candle, and then there's actually another lighter gray that's like zero to one light candles. What we did in the area along the wetland area was, we actually installed an extra hood on the bottom of the light. We were getting about .7 on the edge of the wetland. We're down to .3. The wetland does come directly up to the edge of the track. So we have just a little bit of spillage, and then it drops right off, only in the area at the center of the field. So we just, and we get down to .1, and then it immediately drops.
Are these light fixtures the Musco Wilco?
Yeah, yes.
Are these basically the same fixtures that are at the high school fields?
That's correct.
So someone wanted to visualize?
That's correct.
What this looked like in terms of intensity and?
That's correct.
Spill, protection of spill outside of the field. You can see it there.
Yes, there would be the identical lights. The only difference is, obviously, on the west side, we're protecting the wetlands with spillage, so there's a hood there. Keep in mind on the photometrics, once the photometrics are based on a flat plain, we've got at the north end and the south end, the north end's got eight feet of grade change between the track surface and the neighboring property, and then the south end has 10 feet of grade change. So that actually helps dissipate the light as well from spilling off the property, because it obviously can't run uphill. And again, the concentration of light is in the high play areas, for obvious reasons. It's in the goalie areas, the most visual to the light areas, and they really need to see in those areas.
Where's the property line on the south side?
On the south side, the property line, Josh, this way. This is the edge of the property line.
Mr. Can you tell me which streets? Streets are?
Fellow Abstrust Streets.
Gardner.
Gardner.
Excuse me, sir. Well, that'll limit questions. The public will have an opportunity later in here. Thank you.
So I'll just give an orientation, so people understand. The north side of the, is the existing school building. That hard line that says "existing building" is actually the school building. The track is located in the same location as it's located. It's not moving. We're not expanding the track. That track is actually staying. We're just repainting the lines. We're actually only doing the field on the inside.
The middle school is to the right of?
To the right. That's correct.
And the Concom has seen this?
They have seen the updated photometric plans. That's correct.
And if we could, just for the road, Main Street is above to the east on this, the property line. That, those are the backyards of the Gardner Street properties. So Dr. Schreier's house, Amanda, could you show above? Dr. Schreier's house is over in this area.
I have all of that. I can show it to you from my desk.
In terms of the controls on the lights, are these set by a automatic series of timers and a computer program that will maintain them on?
Yes, so they're on?
Certain times and off.
They're on automatic controllers, and they can be shut on and off, and on a timer, but they're also on the phone iPhones. You can turn them off and turn them on on the iPhone. People can be notified right away, and they can be, you know, if somebody's not on the field, they can turn them off and turn them on right away. They are metal halide, so they do take time to warm up. It's the issue with metal halide. But they can be controlled from pretty much anywhere.
Anything else?
You're not doing acoustics or sound, your lighting only, right?
I'm the landscape architect for the whole project, but I'm not doing acoustics. But I did read the acoustic report and reviewed it.
Do you have enough retention generally?
Not enough retention generally. The ambient sound was taken on the edges of the property. So there was six places where they did the ambient sound. And then what the report indicated that there wasn't, they weren't going about 10 decibels at the edge of the property based on the sound. One of the things that they are doing is they are using the light poles and lifted, it's the same theory, is lifting up the sound higher so that it distributes more, and can be directed, just like the lights, directly at the field, which actually would help with sound, because it's reflecting more down than out. It's the same exact theory as the light.
I had a question reading the acoustics report on the reflectance of the sound, reflected sound off the hard surface of the buildings, and what that distribution is, and also where is it relative to the adjacent streets? The relationship of Gardner Street, is it facing the facade of the building that faces the field? Trying to get my bearings on the plan.
So Gardner Street is running?
Basically perpendicular to the back of the building.
It's Gardner Street.
Right, so what happens is whether it's the lights?
Jeff, can you need the microphone?
I have a site plan. Would you like to put it up?
Would it be helpful, just to compare it to? Orientation?
I have a high aerial.
Why don't we have the?
Context of the streets.
Don't you finish your submission, if you wanted, and we can go to that?
Yeah. Yeah, why don't you put, is it easier for everyone to see?
You can feel free to use my map if you'd like, or... So what I did, I got two plans from the assessor's office. I cut and pasted them, so you could see, that's basically Pine Grove Road between the two schools. Hingham Junior High School below, that's Notre Dame.
Excuse me, sir. This is the applicant's time to present, and I know you were kinda...
Help themselves, sure.
Well, we'll give you an opportunity one day there. So Jeff, do you wanna help take us through this? Yeah. Do we have an overview?
Do you have a high aerial, like you said?
I do have your high aerial. Does that help?
That's an assessor's map. Do you have a high aerial? Okay, you don't show Gardner Street on it. All right, yeah, actually, that's pretty good. Now, I'm gonna have to get a little closer to it, because my eyes, even with glasses, it's not as good. All right, so folks, Gary, what we've got is, we've got Main Street out in, basically to the east. It's oriented north. You can see Gardner Street that you see at the top. Here's the school, and then we've got field oriented in this direction. Do you have a laser pointer?
I almost brought one. Hi, sorry about that. Thank you very much. Looking at the assessor's map that we've got, north is straight up, and you can see Gardner Street, which comes down, just that gray ribbon, if you will. You can't see Main Street right now, but that's off to the east, which would be to the right. You can see the neck that goes down in the area, right in here, and that's either Father Welsh Drive or Academy Boulevard. It's a private way, and it gets renamed, there are naming rights, et cetera, every so many years. Pine Grove is down in this area to the south. So what happens is, the main building back that we were talking about is this west side that faces the field. And with the field oriented in this direction, and again, it's not moving, so the, you know, basically, it's literally an infill project. So the dirt comes out of the middle of the field. The field stays. And then inside of that is drainage, gravel, et cetera. And then over that is the medium that you're very familiar with. The sound will be generated from two poles in this area, the two east poles, and that'll project down towards the field and then off to the west. So it basically washes over the field in a more focused directional sense. Our original proposal was to put it up in this area, and then wash it back over the field. Our thinking was that it would be in a corner, somewhere where there's a board now. But, you know, just going through it, it was, it became obvious, once we ran the numbers, that the reflection off the back of the building, it was just something that we could avoid by pressing it out the other way. With respect to the directions of the light in orienting you to the photometric plan, basically, the neighborhoods being out to the south, and then also to the north, they've got an end zone, if you will, if I can use a football term, an end zone view down into the field. So where you're looking on the plan that we showed before, where you've got the light gray in this area, and then the super lighter gray, which is, you know, basically under a foot candle, those are terminating, you know, basically before you get to those properties. So pretty effective, the way that it all works. And again, Notre Dame's land from here, just, it goes, I think they've got 60, you know, some odd acres, wetlands, different resources, you know, just wonderful property. But again, they're not going any further. As far as resources being back there, everything was identified as part of the Conservation Commission process. And then what they also did over and above, just, you know, the resources, disturbance of jurisdictional areas, is they also took on the charge as part of, you know, the drainage input to you folks, of looking at where all the field drainage goes. And basically, that goes into an existing system, which goes out to Pine Grove, and then off that goes to Main Street, et cetera. And as part of that process, we were asked to provide the original easements, et cetera. So that's something that we did as part of the process with the Conservation Commission.
Could you touch briefly on the usage of the hours of sound and light, and what's proposed?
Yeah. On, in this, from my memory, and we haven't provided any further information to you folks, because I'm putting it all together now, and then Ms. Murphy actually asked me to look at some cases that we're looking at as part of this as well. What they were looking to do is to use the lights, looking at, you know, in a general sense, the fall season, and then also the spring season. They were looking at using the lights from sundown to nine o'clock, if that's basically what the usage or the season would require. As you know, earlier in the year, the school year, it doesn't get darker until a later time. So it's somewhat flexible on the hours of usage.
How many days a week would that be?
Well, right now, and this is what we spoke about last week, and it has to do with the way that Notre Dame schedules this. When I speak to the athletic director, she's got blocks of time, the way that she's used to doing this. So from our perspective, it was a situation where we said, we would have the lights available for use Monday through Friday. I don't recall the exact Saturday hours, as I stand here. No usage on Sunday.
Is it consistent with what we received on March 24?
Yes, we haven't changed that. One of the points that we wanted to make at that time was that amplified sound, for example, was only going to be used... One of the points that we wanted to make at that time was that amplified sound, for example, was only going to be used at games. So, if you ask me, well, what nights is that going to be, Notre Dame doesn't have the ability to say, you know, scheduling, we only play on such and such a night, or such and such, you know, they can't say, games will be restricted to Tuesdays and Thursdays, or things of that nature, because they're part of a league. And, you know, the way that it comes down, different nights would be available for them. They only have so many teams, you know, that, that's the other thing, it's a fixed number of students in the school. They've only got so many teams, they're not looking, you know, to expand things of that nature. What they're looking to do is to get some of the teams that use, whether it's, you know, the, the dirt, you know, there are various all dirt fields now. What they're looking to do is to have a situation where they can get them onto a field that would be available for use, whether it, you know, rained the day before or whatnot. All of the advantages that we looked at and went through on other projects, also, they don't have to fertilize it, they don't have to pay to stripe it, they don't have to mow it. So, there are just inherent advantages that despite the fact that it's got a higher initial cost, if you actually look at the, you know, the savings, the different convenience, that all works to some benefit, obviously. Whatever sound there is for mowing, maintenance, that's, you know, that's not going to occur on the, on the field. From the perspective of Concom, we're not looking at somebody putting down nitrogen-based fertilizers, et cetera. So we're able to, we're able to exact a lot of real-world benefits that aren't just related to the, you know, the programming benefits for the, you know, for the students.
Jeff, is there a distinction on the schedule of, proposed schedule of usage, a distinction between practice and hours of operation and games? In terms of hours of operation, because I know on some of our other projects that we reviewed, feel the lights are on till eight o'clock if it's a game, off at eight fifteen to give fifteen minutes to prepare or finish up. But then at practice, the lights might be on till nine. Now, that distinction would say that if lights are only on to eight, the sound is only on to eight, whereas practice might be on till nine with a final shut-off of nine fifteen, but you wouldn't have the sound. Is that something that's being considered here?
Well, what, what you just said, the, you know, that approximate, that sounds like what, what we're basically proposing. They're not looking to put it on from every, you know, put it on a timer till nine fifteen at every, you know, every night, regardless if, for example, if there were a game to start at, you know, seven o'clock and it was over at eight thirty, it's not a situation where the, the timer's just gonna tick off and they're going to be burning the wattage, be having a situation where the neighbors have to say, look, no one's on the field, they're not using it. It's, it's going to be tailored, and that was what Art was talking about with, for example, the cell phones, that they can actually go in and shut down the system. If there is a practice, again, you're right, there won't be the amplified, amplified sound, you know, regardless of when that is. Practices have no reason for sound. Games, you know, if, if somebody gets a goal, or their announcement's welcome, you know, everyone behave, you know, these are athletes, et cetera. Those are all, you know, basically in play, like, like we've approved on other, other projects. But the intent isn't to just kind of use it in a, any type of blanket manner, but to be able to actually, you know, keep it within check. I believe, and this is why you folks, I'm sure, would ask for a one-year look back, we'd certainly even offer it. I think it's gonna be a situation where they also want to see, is this something that with MIAA rules, and then the rules with respect to the Catholic leagues, is this something that, you know, we can, you know, have more predictability with respect to, something that we can, we can trim right now? There isn't that level of, of scrutiny to exactly when everyone's on the field. They just haven't had an opportunity to really break that out and take a look at when people leave the fields. The other piece of the equation is that, as of right now, the girls' lacrosse team practices, and they also play at Ward Street. So as part of, as part of the plan here, they'd like to be able to bring that team back to the, you know, to the field and allow the, allow the girls to participate on the actual campus. As we mentioned before, that's got some unintended but fortuitous benefits, because now at the end of, end of the day, when we've got people leaving school, we've got parents picking up children, we don't also add into the mix the girls that are jumping in the cars and going to, going to Ward Street.
The question I have, Jeff, is on the-
Yep.
On Saturday afternoons, when Resurrection has events and services, and I forget what, what the time is of everything that they do, I know it's about five, does that also mean on a Saturday that there's really no games planned after four o'clock, or whatever time the church needs to prepare for what their services are?
Exactly, they're, you know, again, I'd like to say as part of the master plan, but the history of the use between the two properties has been that, you know, the, the Sunday intensity for the church is obviously a day that Notre Dame doesn't have the games. They have had good scheduling with respect to avoiding overlaps of, of different events. As part of our meeting with Father Quinn this week, and also with his board, what we're going to do is look at, seeing if we can come up with, you know, advance notice, et cetera, and see if we can get some of those issues so that we're doing it a little more proactively, a little more consciously. And you'll see that as part of the large event protocol that we put together with Chief Olson. One of the points in there is that there actually be communication with respect to planned events and coordinating the events to avoid, you know, peak, you know, peak events. One of the things that's of interest is that the, the peak, peak events that we talk about are basically that, that track event, which is in late April. Other than that, there's, there's quite a number, I think, over a hundred spaces are at Notre Dame itself, well over two hundred at Resurrection. So if you look at just the raw numbers of what you've got for the parking, you know, we're not changing anything whatsoever. Things work there, the comments, you know, that we get, it works. Notre Dame's been very good at using Officer Joel, I can't remember his last name, but they're very, very proactive with respect to having a, an officer who's assigned there every day. And then they've been kind of good as far as knowing in advance when they need to get additional detail officers. And then Chief Olson actually put in his requirement, so it's all specified in, in those materials. As part of Resurrection, the other piece of the equation is Notre Dame pays to, for example, maintain and plow that road going in, Father Welsh Drive, but there's some sharing of the plowing of the parking areas, and particularly after last year, costs of plowing, the question is, you know, who really derives a lot of the benefit, who's in a position to, to need that plowed on a, you know, a weekday basis, if you will. So those are some of the issues that we're going to talk about, so that as going forward, there's a proper allocation of responsibility and, you know, cost control for that. And then finally, the other thing that we didn't notice, mention, is that as part of the Concom process, we went through, we've got like an entire O and M in BMP's protocol for the, for the parking lot at, at Notre Dame, which, built in the nineteen sixties. We've got, you know, not a whole lot of deep sump fixtures, but which ones there exist, you know, they're proposing hoods, they're proposing different cleaning regimens, et cetera. So as part of going in, changing grass to this turf, putting in the lights, you know, converting, not really converting, we're taking down a, a large garage and replacing it with that storage and concession and a little bathroom building, we wind up being able to kind of nudge, nudge the property into a little further compliance with stormwater, you know, whatever, it's stormwater, kind of, yeah, is, is out there.
And our last hearing, also, just to follow up on what you've been talking about here. We were, I thought we were gonna get an overall site plan with the parking. In walking the site, I'm having a hard time finding out just how many spaces there are on the church's property, but also how many spaces there are in Resurrection's property, because they had the original parking, and then they had the parking that was revised when the convent was transitioned into classroom space and lab space. And then there was a third renovation that also affected, and so it would be very helpful to get a plan.
Overall with both, absolutely.
Overall, showing everything, just so that we know where we're, where we're starting.
Yep.
You know, and at this point in time.
As, absolutely, and as part of going forward from the nineteen ninety-seven, the nineteen ninety-seven agreement, you know, is obviously dated. So as part of re-articulating a current, a current shared parking agreement, it'll be important for us to have a up-to-date delineation and accounting for the different spaces, so we'll definitely do that. We just not, before we meet with them, as we walked in tonight, we knew that there were only gonna be three members, and that's helpful, because we want to get, we want to get a listing of, of things we can add to what we've got for our list of to-dos.
Mary, is there a byright number of spaces required?
We requested the count from Jeff Durk, the IT, parking standards, and we haven't gotten a response yet.
Yeah. The parking table in the zoning bylaw is in dire need of updating.
It's on the list.
It does not have school or athletic facilities or recreation, it has recreation, but it does not even have under-institutional schools of that type. So, you have to kind of go off what the IT standards are, then adjusted to the actual proposed use, which is something that the applicant's submission should include, so that Jeff Durk can review it for, based on his understanding of the project. So that's, you know, that need, that's to be done.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, put it together. The variables that we look at are, we've got a whole lot of kids that don't drive until, you know, a certain, almost, you know, junior, senior year. We've got parents who drive, we've got older kids that drive, and it varies how many kids are in each car, et cetera. We will articulate that. What we know is that we're not going to change any of the uses here. So I, I think we know enough to look at the existing array. This isn't going to attract, you know, any more kids. So for example, we're putting in some bleacher seats, you know, all of a sudden, this isn't gonna be the hot ticket in town. This is going to be parents who are able to get out of work or make it over here to watch their daughter play at sport instead of standing around. They're actually going to be able to get comfortable, sit down. There's going to be ADA provision, so what we're doing overall, you know, I, I talk, as in, it's a wonderful thing, we're bringing, you know, the, the, the parking lot up to, you know, somewhat near a modern environmental standards. The bottom line is, we get to, we get to pull a lot of this up to what we all expect for, for different standards as being, is, being able to sit at a, sit at an event, you know, actually sit down, not stand. People stand around, they can hit, get hit by balls, they're not in the right spots. This controls where people are. Moreover, for the track and field, what you'll see on that are the, you know, the javelin discus-type pits. Those are those interesting V-shaped pits. One of them, the, for example, I think is one of the bleachers, is actually spun around to look at that discus area. I don't understand how they really operate these track and field events very closely yet, but we met with, with their coach, and we have a better understanding of why they're doing that. And what it does is it allows the parents to actually be seated somewhere, they're in a stationary position while, you know, different things are being thrown. So, in addition to the ADA components, it, it allows for a crowd control of people, and, and that's apparently something that's very common in other, you know, other venues.
Jeff, just a question, I've been looking at the traffic analysis, I wasn't clear about, Notre Dame has expanded to have grade seven and eight going forward, right? So is that gonna be more cars on site than are set out in the traffic analysis?
It's, I don't know exactly when it was expanded to, what's happened is that, I, I want to use the word occupancy, that's probably right. The occupancy of the school is down overall. So what's happened is the, the inclusion of those younger grades, while bringing in, you know, younger kids who don't drive, et cetera. That, that fills out the number of seats that, that are existing at the school. So there's a certain number, maximum number of seats that in the past has, has been what the enrollment has been. And then recently, I don't know if it has to do with, you know, economic effects or whatnot, but some of the overall numbers have actually thinned somewhat. You know, some people will say that their athletic facilities are a contribution to that, because they have to compete with, with other towns, where people, as part of their, you know, real estate taxes, they're, they're getting modern facilities. So there are, there are a number of things, I'm sure that different families have different reasons, but the overall numbers are down. And by adding the seventh and eighth grade, it allows them to restore, you know, this, this mix towards the maximum number. What ultimately, you know, effect that's going to have, I don't know, but our maximum number for the school is the maximum number.
Jeff, I just want to add one thing, 'cause I know that all of this is kind of a work in progress, so, is for the use table that you submitted back in March, it's a great setup for us, 'cause it, 'cause we're familiar with that style.
I think you wrote together.
That's, might be why I like it, but the, the, the language about games could be a little bit more clear that it's, as far as the neighbors go, to be reassured that this is for NDA teams only.
Yes.
And that, and if there could be some language somewhere about the number of, I understand that it's hard for the athletic director to say which exact nights of the week there would be games, but maybe a limit of total number of games per season, because it's just taking the number of teams times the number of games, so that people will know that if, you know, there's only twelve games a season, and they already heard-
I, I totally like-
They already heard ten of them, there's only two to, two to go.
Yep.
And then in the second part, where it says, winter season beginning the day after Thanksgiving, comma, once snow prohibits track use, it sounds, that sounds like an either or to me. Is it beginning the day after Thanksgiving, or is it when snow, I would just make that more clear as to when it is. But, I look forward to hearing that when you guys have it done.
And that's, just so everyone knows, what you and I were just referring to, the high school usage chart, which was developed, we actually use that as a model going forward, thinking that that was probably an articulation that we knew to be accepted by the planning board, because that model is part of the decision. So our intent would be to add to that model, so that, you know, even if you want to lay them down next to each other, they're, they're internally consistent. The other piece of the equation, the sound here is a lot more simple than the high school, and in many respects, it's more simple, because we don't have the Sunday youth football, you know, a lot of those different issues. By taking Sunday out of the mix, that was, that was, made it a lot easier. And then by being able to say that only the games would be, you know, have any type of announcements, that allowed us to winnow it down as well. So we'll look to tighten that up, but where we don't say things, it, it's just because they're not proposed, and we didn't want to take the time to then state everything in the, in the negative. Maybe we have to, but, but we'll take a look at that and just make sure that it's clear.
And I would think of, you know, I, I look at this from your standpoint and giving you the flexibility you need to run a great athletic program, but also from the neighbor's standpoint and having a really transparent thing that people know what to expect, 'cause surprises are, are worst enemy. Like Saturdays amplified sound till nine o'clock, oh, that's-
Do they play until nine o'clock? We should tell you that.
Right, so we should just have a sense of, like, really, so, that would make me nervous.
See, I, right, see, I, but that's a good point, we're taking notes, as you can see. But we'll find out, are the games on Saturday evening, if there are? You know, are there four a year?
So just something to, some things that the, the expectations are shared.
Yep.
Thank you.
All set?
All right.
Just one other question, Jeff, 'cause I, now that the lights are on, I can look at this decibel plan, and I was hoping that it would have an overlay with the site plan. Could you have them overlay this on the site plan, so that we can see what the decibels are at the perimeter, and also what the effect of the sounding board of the building is?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be very helpful. That'd be very helpful.
And what you'll, what you'll see is that the drop-offs are, now that it's arrayed differently, the, the drop-offs are really, you know, quite, quite tight with the property lines. It actually, that's what I meant with the Kavanaugh, Tati. If you lay it down with the other one, the, the, you know, the, the areas where it just basically goes down towards ambient is, it's, it's pretty good. These folks did take, you know, basically the existing ambience and all the property lines. So if, if you lay that down and go through it, the site plan will be much, you know, be very, very helpful to you. But you'll, you'll notice that they are able to keep within, you know, the D E. P. standards. Which, you know, D E. P. standards aren't necessarily applicable to sporting events. But, you know, knowing that that's something that we were looking at with the high school, you know, we decided to, you know, we'll articulate that and show you folks that there's no rea, you know, it has to do with, with letting people know what we're doing, you know, preemptively. I think goes a long way to getting people to understand the numbers.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right.
Thank you. All right.
I'm going to leave this with Susan.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Actually, that's good.
No, it needs goes on that.
I thought it might be helpful, Susan, if you don't mind. Susan Murphy, Board Counselor's here. If you might just tell us briefly about proper scope of review under the Dover Amendment, not just for the board and for the applicant, but also for the public at large, if you don't mind.
Okay, so, and I'm, I'm repeating stuff that a lot of people may know, but just to kind of, in a summary fashion, the Dover Amendment is actually one portion, known as a Dover Amendment. It's actually one portion of the section of Mass. General Laws. That's chapter forty-eight, section three, which covers a whole bunch of different uses, educational and religious uses, which, of which this is both, is, is protected as to use. So that's, you know, you can't require special permits or otherwise regulate the use per se. However, you can have reasonable regulation with respect to, there's approximately eight items that are called out in the statute. Those are also mirrored in, intentionally mirrored in section three B. eight, two, subsection two, of the zoning bylaw, which talks about what the scope of review by the, for site plan review will be for these types of uses. So that the Hingham zoning bylaw is consistent with state law. And, you know, the, so the Dover protected use is the, is the school, both as an educational and a religious institution. However, you know, the law, there is law out there, and I've, I've shared it with Mr. Tatio. The board has copies of it. That limits the application of the exception, the Dover exception, once you get outside of the predominant educational or religious use. And so there is case law that says if you're not, if you're not one of those protected uses, then you still need to comply with zoning. And as you know, this is kind of one of the issues that the board had to grapple with, with Hingham Public Schools versus Hingham Youth Football, Hingham Youth Football not falling into either category. So, you know, those, those criteria being set forth and stated in the bylaw, and I, I think, you know, the way the board's written site plan decisions in the past is that, you know, now you're still information gathering. But when you come to the point of going through it, and this would be helpful, and this is one of the requests from John Chesia, and I kind of just reiterated it in the email that I sent to Jeff on Friday, is, well, let's walk through those criteria. There's height and bulk of buildings, there's setbacks, there's open space. Just give us the chart. Show us, this is what zoning requires, this is what you have. Either you comply or you don't comply, but you're grandfathered. And we know, for example, the lights will not comply. They're asking for eighty feet. They're providing the justification as to why it is reasonable to request the eighty feet. So that's their burden under the Tufts College case to show, okay, well, eighty feet is more appropriate. And that's been demonstrated in many court decisions in Massachusetts that the higher lights is a reasonable accommodation under the Dover Amendment. So those are types of things I would recommend that when you get to the point, the board actually wa, walk through the Dover criteria, make findings with respect to those. You know, most of them are dimensional. The one that's not dimensional is the parking. And that, you know, tends to be a matter of, you know, concern, both for towns, sometimes for, you know, abutters, depending on where the, the parking is. And so whatever the board feels is the reasonable information you need in order to determine that there's sufficient parking for the various uses that are being proposed and also conditions that are related to that in order to make sure that that parking is available going, and, you know, used properly going forward. So, you know, that's, that's generally the scope and how I would, you know, recommend that the board approach it.
Thank you very much. Before I ask for comments from the public, John Cheshire, the review engineer, do you have any comments for the board at this time? I know you haven't had much to look at.
No, I mean, I did my last review.
Could you stand up to the microphone, John?
I mean, I, okay, I did my, my last review for the planning board, April tenth. What I will say is subsequent to that, there were filings with the Conservation Commission. And my latest review to them was May twenty-second. And they have pretty much gone through the drainage issues that were in my April tenth letter. And they've, I believe, issued an order of conditions, or at least they've closed the hearing, and I would assume it's issued by now. So as far as the drainage issues go, I think that we're pretty well taken care of on that end. It's stuff that's already been talked about that we don't have any new information on that's, that remains.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, so at this time, I would, I'd like to invite members of the public to come up and make comments or ask questions. I would ask you to approach the microphone, state your name, and then identify your address. Does anybody from the public would like to speak, sir?
My name is John Saworda. My address is fifteen Pine Grove Road, Hingham. Above the opinion that this development impacts me more than anybody else in town. I brought a few slides. I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Do you want the light on or off?
I can, I can, that's fine, thank you. I, I'm here because I'm upset with what Notre Dame is proposing. I've attended town meetings but have never spoken. Interestingly enough, most of those town meetings I've attended are related to lighting of athletic fields. I've lived in town for thirty years. My wife and I believed strongly in the benefits combining athletics, physical fitness, academics, and it was a big part of our lives. My oldest is thirty-one. Twenty-eight years ago, second day of kindergarten, he visited South Elementary School. My wife walked home after two days and said, "We're going to improve those school facilities." And she took the lead, and I supported her through the bake sales and the Christmas tree sales and whatever. And we built an athletic field in that backyard. At one point, there was maybe a hundred volunteers. I remember people like Linda Friend. I, I remember tying Christmas trees on cars and people asking for a two-dollar discount on a twenty-five-dollar tree. I remember Linda Friend handing me a hundred-dollar bill for two trees. And Candy O'Brien coming the next day handed me a check for a thousand dollars to build that playground. For what it's worth, my wife has done, has spent seventeen years at the Hingham Food Pantry. In many of those years, it was six days a week. When my oldest was maybe five, Jack Shaughnessy and I created girls' soccer in this town. We were opposed by sick, a number of mothers. At the time, we had six girls playing soccer in town. And they were young, five to six years old. And we explained that the numbers will tell whether we're doing the right thing or not, creating a girls' league. We had six, and we'll know, and we started that. A few years later, I was asked to attend a, a home meeting of some influential athletic directors in Massachusetts looking to beat down a new phase of Title IX. They said it was the worst thing that would happen in this country, Title IX. I left, I thought they were crazy. Ten, about ten years ago, five hundred parents attended a town meeting regarding high school lights. My very first friend in town was a man named Tom Arthur, and he brought some foam core boards and showed these ridiculous lights. I don't know if any of you were around that, that time, but these ridiculous lights for that high school field. I think that was amongst the earlier conversations. He was my first friend. At the end of that meeting, I pulled him aside, and I said, "All these kids want is a safe place to play a few lax games." At the time, I think my two boys were in a state title chase. Next town meeting was regarding lax bubble and lights. I told anyone who had listened that Rob Hale was amongst the most generous in giving people in this town with little or nothing to gain personally. All they wanted was a safe, quality place to play some sports in the winter. My wife and I attend the head of the Charles. My only comment is when I leave, it's the finest example of Title IX in this country. Something like three thousand collegiate women, good schools, getting all the benefits of the sports. I'm a believer in all of this that's going on in my backyard. It's now my turn to address playground lighting for the girls at Notre Dame. Before that, I want to tell you what I do for a living. I have architectural and design skills. I manage the design and the construction of the two most expensive retail projects ever built in the U. S. One of them was Bergdorf Goodman's Men's Store in Manhattan. I've built Macy's and three Neiman Marcus buildings nationwide. I know a little bit about design. I know a little bit about office construction. I manage the design of the high level, at a high-level design-construction budgets for Staples' six-hundred-thousand-square-foot office building that abuts the pike in Framingham. I know a little bit about industrial real estate design and construction. For the past twenty years, I've built eight or ten large distribution facilities. They look like this. One point one million square feet, they typically sit on ninety to a hundred acres or something. That happened to be in Hagerstown, Maryland. I could have brought more photos. I'm sure you appreciate the fact that I didn't. Personally, my partners' convictions and temperament were a fairly dynamic group. One of our specialties is we build non-union projects in strong union areas, and it takes a certain temperament to do that.
Just a word, can you address the applicant's proposal that's here tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's do it. Map. That's a map. That's my house outlined in black. My home is the closest home to Notre Dame's, Notre Dame's existing facility, fifteen Pine Grove Road. That's Pine Grove Road. Pine Grove Road has been inundated a bit by the junior high school expansion and, and now this. It's a close-up and aerial photograph. So I look at Notre Dame as it's got a long entryway, and it's got some volume of space out back, fifty acres or something like that. Long driveway and a lot of circumference. I look at it like a circle. That's the entrance, that's the right-hand side. You can see the open space. That's looking back on that area. There's plenty of space to what I will call Plan East on that property. This is the back, it'd be Plan North. What are the thirty or forty acres of undeveloped land back there? What a luxury to have all that open land. This site has two pinch points. And I showed them to you. I can hold up a site plan if you need to. So the site sits, parallel, we'll say, to Main Street. The building sits, this is the right-hand pinch point. This is a fairly attractive area over here. It's the pinch point. You see the building and the neighborhood down off that parking. This is parallel to that front building facing, we'll say, Plan East. You see plenty of coverage there. Not a lot of homes impacted, not a lot of lighting, not a lot of parking. There's some nice landscaping. Look at that perimeter over there, and they've done a nice job of installing some shrubs. And you can see those homes set back quite some distance. You can notice that the natural buffer is still in decent shape. And it's all well-maintained, well-planted, well-thought-out. Landscape architects stepping up and doing a decent job. Management stepping up and doing a decent job. I'm behind the school, adjacent to the track. That section of track on the left is parallel to Main Street. I'm looking east, and you can see the, I'll say, the minimal impact on those homes in that corner. And I don't know where that doctor lives. I've heard his name mentioned a few times. This is how attractive this end of the building is. This is the pinch point. Tough on neighbors, not bad-looking. That's Main Street. That's a home on the end of Main Street. And that's his neighbor that is abutted by a hedge row, some arborvitae that have overgrown, a partial fence that has fallen down. But there's some screening. Somebody made an effort to screen that at one time. And not particularly well-maintained, but, you know, it is what it is. Looks better than my area. That's the drive. So this is the corner. That's that same home out on the left-hand edge. And there's a ninety-degree corner in that parking corner. You can see those arborvitae hedges set back, and those hedges are in decent shape. And there's, I don't know, a hundred feet of planted grass and minimal lighting there. Turn the corner. We're now running parallel to Pine Grove Road, and we're coming closer to my home. And this is the, this is the opposite. Well, we're getting to a pinch point in this corner. You can see those hedges. They do a decent job of screening that. There's no lighting impact to those neighbors on Pine Grove Road. There's a hundred feet of grass and what, forty, fifty feet of arborvitae, and there are, there are hedge rows. So some effort on that side. You can see that hedge row get a little closer to this fine area. And this is the pinch point that affects me the most. And it is, it is sort of the epicenter of this project. This is what, this is some of the rubble that is behind this, I don't know, thousand-dollar Home Depot fence and this, the shed that has been discussed. On the plans that I've reviewed, the shed was to stay. Let's look again. I'm in the pinch point area, which is my neighborhood. So my home is behind that thousand-dollar Home Depot fence and that shed. You can see how it pinches and how that building gets quite close to that property line. Another view of the same area. It's a pinch point. It gets tight. There's a little bit of parking. Again, a close-up. That's my home behind it in the beige and the off-white trim. It's a tight, narrow area, and it's close to my property line. This is the gate going through. This is the pinch point, looking from, we'll say, this track and field area, looking back at that area. This is the main entrance to this project. Another view. Previous long jump project. So some time ago, while I was in this home, and not paying attention perhaps, the school came in and upgraded this area and put in these long jump, long jump areas. And what I think is of interest is that somebody came through here and cleared out these natural green areas for no apparent reason other than perhaps in the wintertime, maybe they get a little more sun, they melt some snow, they can get at it earlier. But what they did on the opposite side of that area is they took out my coverage. So what could possibly have been the justification for clearing out that much of that natural buffer and exposing that school to me? This is another area where we clear it out, and all it does is make it difficult on the neighbors. If you want a sense of how difficult it is on the neighbors, my next-door neighbor put their house up for sale three weeks ago after thirty years in that, in that area. So at that same time that they put those long jump pits in and cleared out the natural buffer that I had, they put up that lighting with no consideration whatsoever to the neighborhood. I like the school. If I didn't tell you that, I like the school. I like what they stand for, I like what they do. They've just done a lousy job working in my backyard with no consideration. This is a view out my front yard, looking towards the junior high school, and they blew that natural buffer away for an athletic field. I had fifty feet of natural buffer. This is my backyard, standing on my deck looking at that school. If you want a sense of a measure as to how schools and impact and visibility can be measured, I suggest you consider, how many windows can you see? In normal human vision, I can see two hundred windows, and there's no other home in Hingham that has to look at two hundred windows. It's a measure. That's a view from my deck looking towards the track where the lights are going. This is a view from my deck to that, that shed that has been in disrepair. That's the fence to screen the dump site that's behind that. And you can see, you can see that blue door is their, their power plant. That's a bit of a close-up of what that shed and the dump site behind me looks like. This, I took this photo to give you a sense of, I took a horizontal line for the railings to give you a sense as to how my ground slopes off, and I'm exposed. My backyard is at a lower elevation than theirs. And all I do is see all of this. My backyard is at a lower elevation than theirs and all I do is see all of this. And you can see where that track is, is where all the lighting is going to go and God forbid, where do we talk about this toilet room? So that's how, that's how the topography changes in the backyard, that's how I get exposed to that. That's a view from inside my home and my family room, looking out, and I get to look at that view. That's from my kitchen window, looking at that existing view. That's from my second floor. This is standing in my driveway, looking at it. This is from my neighbor across the street from Pine Grove Road. Sorry, there's a lot of photos, but what I want to give you a sense is that it's pretty damn visible. This is what I call the shed section and... So the last time I saw a plan, this will give you an idea, you can see that Notre Dame has two pinch points. I showed you those wonderful architectural photos of the other side. This is what I have. Is it coming down or not, I'm not sure. When you stand in my yard and you look at this broken fence, because the trees from Notre Dame keep falling into, onto that fence and into my yard and I keep cleaning them up.
Whose fence is that?
That's Notre Dame's fence in, in the area. And I'm going to show you a site plan in just a second and you'll be able to see that. So this is, this is concrete rubble that they have stored there for 25 years. They didn't want to look at it, so they put a fence up. Okay. Fallen trees. You want to see what this natural buffer looks like? This is what, I used to have twice that amount before those long jump pits got in there. This is how they landscape the area and maintain it. And that's my protection and it disappears at a rate of about 20% a year, I think. It's another view of this mess. Close-up. And that's how, if you don't just look down at the ground and see what's laying on the ground, if you happen to look up into trees, that's what it looks like overhead. My buffer is sort of nonexistent and seems to me barely acceptable. Here's a view of my backyard from the school and you can see that there's not much of it and the trees have started to leaf here. That's the view from the school through that mess to my backyard. So, look, I, I like the school. I like the fact that those girls are getting those benefits of those athletics and I enjoy some of the noise, even that ridiculous amount of noise I hear in April with this major track meet. But I have tried to screen it. What you see along that fence is three generations of trees. I have tried two other varieties of trees, trying to get them to grow fast enough to screen it. I think those are cypress and I've lost a couple. I keep planting them and I'm trying. But you can see how ineffective it is and, and those trees are now 12, 14-foot tall and they don't even screen the sidewalk walking in there. That's, that's that wonderful building. So now I'm in my yard, give you a sense of the size of those trees that I've planted and replanted and fertilized and trimmed to try and give me some protection. It looks decent from that view, not so much from that view. I'm working at it. I've made a good effort, I think. They've got a new procedure over at that school. Some wizard has decided that it will be slightly easier to have all the trucks pull into, not stay in the parking lot, but they can now pull into the track and they can unload whatever's going on at the school, they can unload inside the fence. For that February event, they had something the size of a Winnebago cooking something out there. They bring this stuff in once, twice a month and it would be nice if somebody would share with them and say, "Hey, how about this? We'll keep the trucks on the damn pavement and they don't have to drive through the yards and I have to look at that five times, eight, 10 times a year." This is what, this is what Hingham does. When they decide that they're going to put a toilet room in, they go back into this area, I think that's what I'm looking at. So they put their toilets here, and I'll show you a photo of it, so that it doesn't inconvenience anybody. It's got probably a concession component. I haven't been there in, in a few years, but you folks probably understand that better than I. But they'll put that 150 yards away from whatever, they kept it from the neighborhoods. They've screened it with something, I don't know, bleachers. But how about this? It looks like a bigger effort than Notre Dame has made. I'm on the Plan Northeast corner, looking back at the school. You don't have to be oriented necessarily to this. All I show you is, this is the, we'll call it architectural articulation of a perimeter. In other words, are there any jogs or voids in this perimeter that would create a place to put any new space that they require? It is incredible, the amount of jogs and voids that if they need an addition, they can butt them to. That's looking at sort of the same corner from the opposite side. Plenty of space for stuff. This is a midpoint of the building and you can see the voids on either side of that. Now we're looking back at my pinch point and there's this enormous, what is that? 150, 200-foot-deep void where they could put whatever else they need for structure. What they have in that area, you can see little concrete pads, is they've got a couple of ejector pits in that area and it's a little bit fussier to work in and amongst them. Somebody's got to have an engineer document, survey, something. There's the pits. But there are these voids everywhere. We're very close to my backyard. You have any new structures, any new construction? How about you put it in a void? Notre Dame plans. Look, these are some of the weakest plans, I should phrase that better. These plans don't seem to want to communicate, they communicate playground stuff. They don't really communicate like engineers and architects do with occupancy loads and information that would impact the town and, and the neighborhood. But there's a plan that shows some perimeter and there's something happening on that perimeter. This plan gets a little bit better. This is my yard. This is the pinch point. This is the person that after 30 years decided to sell and move. And in their wisdom, they decided if we've got to have new structure, let's put it in the tightest location, let's put it in the tightest location in the town of Hingham. There is no other school property any closer to any town than my backyard. So, so that's the worst condition in the town of Hingham. Let's put another building in between that space. My God. So I'm in the development business and I'm going in three weeks to a town meeting in Connecticut for a zone, for a...
Mr. Swerden, can you live in your comments to this?
Yeah. I, I've never been to a plan, planning meeting where the developers didn't have solutions for the neighbors in hand. This, this triangular section up here...
Mr. Swerden, I think you need to take the microphone with you if you're going to move around.
Pardon me. That section that I just pointed to has a 30-foot-tall net on it. So the toilets, the masonry toilets aren't bad enough. Let's stick a 30-foot, and the lights aren't bad enough, which we don't understand schedules for, we don't understand uses for, because an athletic director is, is more important than scheduling and towns and impact and neighborhoods. But they're going to put a 30-foot-high net up there and somebody tell me how well that's going to be maintained or how wonderful that will be to look at. In addition to the 85-foot light poles, I got some netting that will be, I promise you, poorly maintained and ridiculous to look at. So watch this. Some wizard decided, I'll tell you how this happens. It's $2,000 less expensive to put that toilet room there because of some sanitary location and to stick it around the corner cost them another two grand. So they stick that there. The problem is that they can't even, they can't even put a shrub in between my property, the wetland, and this ridiculous masonry toilet room because the shrubs don't fit. So I've got six-foot shrubs here and for protection in this corner, which gets even worse, they have some grass. You've got to be kidding me. This is the frozen music they're sticking on my corner. So I went to see, this is a masonry building, it's mostly toilets, and I went to see how the town does other similar structures. I went to Wampe Tuck Park and I promise you, they spent two and a half times the amount of money making the restrooms in the state park better-looking. No effort whatsoever on site planning, no efforts on screening. As a matter of fact, they took the worst location and said, "Let's make it that much worse." How about for a suggestion, somebody went to this side of the building, if the septic system, the opposite side of this pinch point, is too cumbersome because it's a $5,000 expenditure, maybe they could come to this side, to this void, and they can put their concession stand and their restrooms up against this corner. And somebody could find, somebody could give me some screening or the future neighbors that move into my, my neighborhood, some screening behind that fence so that I don't have to look at this any longer. And instead of six-foot white pines and ornamental grass as a screen for 85-foot light fixtures, I would propose these. So I have three of these. They're called cryptomeria. They grow, you can see them, they're fast-growing, they're a magnificent tree and apparently the landscape architect thinks ornamental grass is a screen. I, I suggest this as an alternative. Here's what I want you to hear. I think I need to see some improvement to what's here and I'm hoping the town will help me address, the existing conditions are unacceptable and these proposed, I don't know, I think are ridiculous. My objective is, is to help find a solution where the girls can get their lighting and safe and it's a more exciting place and their, their enrollment increases and I'll feel good about being a neighbor. But I'd like the town's help solving some of these problems. I believe this thing impacts me more than anyone else in town. Thanks.
Thank you. Here, you want to... Is there somebody else that would like to speak?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I know that as part of the Concom order of conditions, some of that debris will be cleaned up and there'll be some limited planting. There is wetlands immediately next to the property line. So I'll get for the board a copy of the final order of conditions and what's being done under that approval so that you can balance that against anything else that might happen.
Am I still allowed to comment or am I done? Should I be sitting?
If you have a brief comment.
There's room with a little tweaking to get, if there's room to put a new toilet building, they call it concessions, a toilet building, they move it around the corner, there's ample room for significant trees that will help with the situation.
Thank you.
And I can help you solve any of those problems.
Thank you. If you'd be kind enough to state your name and your address.
I don't know how I had to follow you, but thank you. My name is Diane Denapley. I'm on 16 Gardner Street and I have two young children. My youngest is six and he is in the autism spectrum. He has a very difficult time sleeping. If you're familiar with children with autism, two things they have difficulties with are sleeping and change of structure. And the noise from this field would float into our backyard very, very loudly, 10 decibels coming through our bedroom when his light, lights-out time is seven o'clock would probably be two hours of very difficult time getting him to sleep. It's concerning that we don't seem to have an understanding nor would we when these things would happen, very unpredictable. Obviously, I'm not the only one with young children. We moved to a street like Gardner Street because we wanted to be safe, we wanted to be quiet and we like seeing some night stars. And I think those things are all going to be significantly compromised if this goes through. And I just think, to your point, a plan is a plan when we all know what's going on and I hear a lot of, "We're not sure, we may find out after a year." But that's too far gone. So I really hope we have more details. I think nine o'clock is completely unacceptable for loud sounds to be coming through with this neighborhood filled with children. I think, you know, most kids go to bed six, seven. Let's try to consider that there are a lot of young children coming into that neighborhood and it's just unacceptable sound volume. I don't care what the system is, it's loud noise. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dr. David DiBenedetto. I live at 54 Gardner Street. I also own 52 Gardner Street and 52 Reverse Gardner Street. That map is a little bit deceiving because I think the playing fields are on the resurrection, there are other playing fields on the resurrection property because my house goes directly towards the playing fields and that's listed as resurrection, not Notre Dame. The noise is loud. When there's graduation, I think they had a party that was after nine o'clock. I looked at my watch, it was 9:15. I go to bed early. I had to close my windows on a nice day. The noise was unacceptable, but once a year is okay. They're a good neighbor. I think we need a better buffer zone for noise. I don't think lighting is going to affect me. And the other thing is parking. When there are playing fields during the day, if you go over there, and I have because my daughter graduated recently, not from Notre Dame, but from Hingham High, there's not enough parking for the playing fields that abut my property. So what's going to happen if there are playing fields there and there's other things going on? There's not enough parking. That's going to be addressed.
How do you see the fact that this, that there's no, not enough parking now? I mean, how do you, what do you see physically?
They, they need more parking now.
But does it affect your street or your...
Does it affect me? I mean, I enjoy the noise during the day, but at night I don't enjoy the noise.
But you don't see parking on Gardner Street from events?
No, I mean, what we do have is people run through or people walk through different years through my property between the Riley's and my property. I mean, that's part of life. We don't do anything about it, but it affects us. If there's going to be more people, I don't know. The town doesn't address it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hi, how are you? My name is Marlee McManus. My husband and I live at 90 Gardner Street. We've lived here for a little over 12 years. Thank you for letting me ask some questions and speak to you tonight. I didn't do as much homework as this gentleman here, but I do believe that we are equally impacted. Our property backs up to the track at NDA. I live next door to Dr. Schreier, so those of you who know him from school committee and his involvement in these discussions, I'm right next door. My children's bedrooms overlook the track. We've always enjoyed having NDA as neighbors. We've never had any issues. When we bought the house, we asked our Realtor, "What's the deal with the school back there?" and we were told, "It's a very quiet, private girls' school." No, no issue whatsoever. And it hasn't been. But we are concerned about what's being proposed. I'm disappointed that there's no one here that can really speak to the specifics of the sound, the acoustics. I was provided the chart of u, of usage for the high school. It sounds as though there may have been one back in March for NDA, but that type of information would be extremely helpful. I'd love to be able to compare side-by-side, apples-to-apples, what we're talking about. It's my opinion that the private schools shouldn't be given greater leeway than the public schools. We pay taxes to enjoy all of the school properties in town. Our children will get to enjoy those fields at the high school and, and the other fields in town. But for the private schools, for which I, I really don't see any benefit to the residents of the town, unless I'm misunderstanding, it looks as though there may be sound proposed up until 9:00 PM. Is that correct? I don't know if that's correct.
The current proposal, which is going to be revised after tonight, so hopefully your input will be considered.
Okay.
But that is available in the record if you wanted to come up here.
Okay. Oh, great. Thank you so much.
But it is also available in the office for anybody.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I didn't have this in advance. My kids go to bed around seven o'clock or 7:30 each night. Like I said, their bedrooms overlook the track. I, I question the fact that the sound, no matter how high or concentrated or directed it is at the ground or if you, I should have had photos to show you where we, we directly see the track. There has been vegetation taken down over the years, so we see more of the track than we did prior, in prior years. So there's no question that that will impact us on a daily basis. Respectfully ask that everybody consider the neighbors on Lower Gardner Street and Pine Manor, obviously. There's quite a few of us, I would also say, and I don't have specifics to back this up, but when we moved to Gardner Street 12 years ago, it was a street largely of older families. We were one of the very few young families with young children. With the addition of three new cul-de-sacs on our street, we've seen a huge boom in young families and young children. So we, I would argue that we've become more of a neighborhood and we're pretty proud of that fact. We've come together a lot more in the past couple of years and would very much appreciate this group considering our request to adhere to the same, if not stricter, standards for noise amplification at the school property. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
My name is John Kitchler and I live at 94 Gardner Street. And just for the record, there are four houses that live, that... And just for the record, there are four houses that live, that sit west of the field, which basically west of the field, which is where the lights are going to go and the sound's going to go, right? I don't think that's a proper thing to do to the neighborhood, to our property evaluations, and to the children in the neighborhood. There's got to be some way that they can take care of that without infringing on other people's rights and their homes. The other thing that I have, I heard a little while ago that there was a possibility that they were going to be renting the field to other teams and other groups. To do that, they have to advertise. Now they're running a business in a basically residential area, which I don't think they can do. So I, thank you very much, it's the two things I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Edna English, and I'm a, I live at thirty-six Gardner Street, and I would like to know if there's any place that one could take a look at the proposal with the, particularly the amplification, as well as the hours and the number of games that would be played. I've had an opportunity to take a look at what the Hingham High is allowed to do at the fields, and I know that there's discussion about it. But anyway, the first iteration of that seemed to limit the number of games, limit the people who could play the games, and the hours of amplification. And I think that in respect, to respect, the neighborhood people, I've lived there for over fifty years in that neighborhood, and we've always appreciated the fact that we could listen to spring peepers in the evening and not be disturbed by amplified noise. So I would like to ask if we could find out, will it be on your website? How can we follow it? And then I would also ask that, that you, especially in regard to the amplification, because we, we don't want our peace disturbed. We've been enjoying quiet and peace, and we do like the school very, very much. We do not like amplification that's going to keep our children awake at night and also prevent us from enjoying the peace and quiet of our neighborhood in the evening. So I hope that you will be able to strictly limit what can be done here, not to eliminate the whole proposal, but to very closely limit the activities that can go on there and the amount of amplification and the number of games that can be played. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. English. And for the record, there is an acoustical report that's available through the town planner, and also there was a preliminary usage study, which is also available. But I think in listening to the applicant tonight, those are going to be updated, so you can check in with the town planner and get that information. Is there anybody else?
My name is Laura Soajam, at Six Winds Songway, and I'd also like to reiterate what Marley said about the usage. I just can't understand why a nonprofit private school would have greater leniency on usage than a public school that's impacting, you know, that's used by taxpayers in the school, where this is a private school, a nonprofit. I don't understand why their, their usage would be, would be greater. It doesn't make any sense to me. I also came a little late this evening, so I apologize. I am on the parish council at resurrection. I have spoken with Father Quinn about the parking, and I hadn't spoken with him this week, but as of last, two weeks ago, he had mentioned that he knew nothing about this, and that there were very strict, strict covenants on the parking, and that it was, to his knowledge, it was only during the day. And he said, there is no parking at night. When they have an event at night, they have to clear it through me, because we have events at night, too. And if they're going on at the same time, it's chaos. There's meetings for communion, there's meetings for confirmation. So I, I hope to be part of that meeting with Father Quinn, because I am on the parish council, but I would say that parking is definitely going to be an issue, because I think that it's a little more stricter than it's being thought to believe. So I'd like to make sure that that's a consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, did you, did you hear that there is a meeting scheduled already?
I just heard it secondhand, because I came in a little late.
Okay, I think it's, is it in our letter?
It's sometime this week, I don't know.
I think the applicant indicated that he's going to be speaking with Father Quinn. We did get a letter from Father Quinn recently.
So you might want to contact him, because it's supposed to be happening this coming week.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, so I think what we're looking at is a continued hearing date. Oh, Susan, have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just want to maybe sum up from my comments at the beginning, which is, and I'm going to say things that you heard me say two weeks ago, when we had the high school fields here, which is, I think the analysis from a legal standpoint is, the state law apply, first state law, and then the zoning bylaw, and then the town noise bylaw, if it applies. There's the factors in the Dover Amendment you can review. There's questions about locations of buildings, do they meet the setbacks? If they meet the setbacks, then the next question, you know, so with each of the elements, that's what are they required to do? And then the next question is, what is any property owner of any type willing to do vis-à-vis their neighbors, whether they're required to do it or not? So, I mean, I think part of what John Chessie had asked for, and I reiterated in my email to Jeff on Friday, is, you know, show us whether the application meets or doesn't meet the minimum criteria of state law, whether they can show that or not. And then from there on, it's just a question for the applicant of, to the extent they do meet it, whether they have, you know, the way it's proposed, is there anything else they're willing to do? I will note that the policy that the planning board attached to its decision, and then recently revised on the usage, was not imposed by the planning board, but was the product of public hearings by an elected board, the school committee, working with its neighbors, and then presenting to the planning board, and the planning board kind of talking with those groups to tweak it. But it was not a policy imposed by the planning board, and there is a significant difference in that. So I would just, you know, I, I am just here to kind of give you what the legal framework is in which you have to work, and I understand that that's not necessarily going to address a lot of the concerns people have. But the law is the law, so the question is, where does the law stop, and where does the parties working together start?
Well, and I would just add to that, but I, as a member of the planning board, I've sat on a number of hearings on Dover Amendment-protected applicants. The South Shore Baptist Church on Main Street is one that comes to mind, the Hingham High School Fields.
Montessori.
The Montessori school up on Derby Whiting, and then the, there's a church on Ward Street also that we had.
The Church of Latter Day Saints.
Yeah, and in all cases, I feel that the applicant really tried to work with the neighbors to address some of the issues, and that it's really important for the neighbors to voice their concerns and for the applicant to listen, because there are things that can be done to make the project better for the neighbors that don't necessarily materially affect the project. There are things that we can't control, that people do have to get used to, and it's, I'm not saying that, but, but I would urge everyone to stay in this and to not assume the worst of either the applicant or the abutters, because it, because coming closer together, actually, we get to a better project. So.
Thank you. All right, so I think what we're talking about now is a date, and I'm not sure how available you folks are. I was thinking about August third. Are you going to be around, G?
Sure.
You can do August third.
All right. Jeff, how does that work for you folks?
I know Jeff Dirk is available August third.
Susan can do August third.
Great, August third's great.
Do we need anything from the applicant?
We would need a written request for extension, and then the board needs to vote on that. And would you like to say seven o'clock?
Please.
Would the applicant be able to bring the acoustical team to present at that meeting? I think that would be helpful. And you'll be providing written responses to Mr. Chessie's comments soon, so that we can have those turned back around in time? Will you have a revised landscape plan? Will you have a revised landscape plan, or is the landscape plan? Yeah, that would be great.
Jeff, we also have an overall site plan that shows everything in context.
Resurrection, everything. And obviously, a lot of the issues, we heard tonight for the first time, so we'll take a look, because we do have different landings, or look at it from the perspective of the comics.
And there was a request to overlay the lighting plan over the site plan, so you'll, you have that in your notes as well.
Is parking lot, security lighting, park? It'd be nice to see more than just the field. Could you come up to the, if you're still taking?
Sure. Could you identify yourself in the record?
Jim White, twenty-eight Gardner Street, and been over to the school a number of times. They're a great neighbor. But I just saw some photographs tonight from the side of the school that I don't live on, where the parking lot lighting looked extremely intrusive on the neighborhood. And I just think that we're focusing on, on this, and if they're going to be changing the green screen at all between the neighborhood and the school, then you have to reevaluate the existing lighting also.
Thank you. Basically, so I'm submitting a written request with respect for the continuous August third, with respect to the existing lighting that's not part of the proposal, we wouldn't be looking necessarily to add anything, change lighting, et cetera, but to, you know, to basically maintain what is there. With that said, we'll take a look and see if there are, you know, any obvious issues, et cetera. May also be a situation where there might be a defective light head or something along those lines, so we'll, we'll take a look at that as well. All right, so do we have a motion to?
So you have a request?
To can, to extend the hearing to?
August three.
August third at seven o'clock.
So we need a motion to approve that request? We have a motion to approve that request?
So moved.
Second?
All of them.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. So we'll see y'all on the third of August at seven o'clock. Thank you. We have weather vane at eight-thirty. Do you want a break? Yeah, go right ahead.
We're not too far off, right?
No, we're just going to take a quick break. ... at Chestnut Gardens, request for lease of Form Covenants. Is there someone to present on that?
Good evening, my name is Carl Erickson with Bristol Brothers Development, and as you noted here before you, to request release of the remaining lots under the planning board covenant for the weather vane at Chestnut Gardens. The board has previously released fifteen of these lots, fourteen of those are sold, one is under agreement of the eight requested tonight for release. Two of those have signed agreements as well, and two of them will be the affordable units required under our flexible residential bylaw. Since last before here, we've retained MCO's Housing Services to assist with completing the affordable units. We've contracted with them, they're finalizing the local action unit application. They'll be handling the marketing in accordance with DHCD requirements. They'll be holding informational sessions as we get the units are ready. They'll handle the lottery, determine the lottery winner, and act as the qualifying agent. We expect to have the draft application within the next week or so. The consultant was out last week. We've redlined the regulatory agreement, which is one of the other standard components of the application. That's with our attorney, so once we can get all that back to MCO, we should have a packet in for Emily, and for the town to start to review. There still is a hundred and twelve thousand dollar performance bond securing the project. Mary had asked a question about whether or not it needed to be revisited. It does carry a twenty percent contingency on that, nineteen thousand of that is for inflation and other things as the project progresses. So I think that bond is still in line with that. We would expect to have the first of the affordable units in the spring of sixteen. You know, after this, we begin to prepare a building permit set, start that construction, work with MCO for the marketing in advance of that, and the second one probably by the fall of two thousand and sixteen. And I have that map, I don't know, it's just a site map that just marks out which ones are sold under agreement, the two that are identified for the affordable. It's a little small print, but.
Of the requested units... Where would that bring the total? How many units?
All twenty-three would be released.
All twenty-three, and then of the two affordable ones, would those be released now, or would you?
Those would be released, not, not when you get the proposal.
So all we'd have left is the bond, right?
Correct.
And is there work to complete on the roadways and things that's been revised?
In the bond... In the bond that, HML had done, you know, it does have, completing the as-built, raising some of the frames and covers that are under the base coat, completing the top coat of that. He's gone through and identified various components when he did the original setting of the bond amount.
I was trying to get an understanding of how much was left that's.
What remains to be done?
What remains rather than the original. Do we have an assessment of that?
Top coating of the roadway would be the major item. You know, raising of some of the grates and covers that are underneath the base coat.
But typically, before we release the remaining lots, don't we go out there with the town's peer review engineer and do a cost to complete? It's pretty comprehensive and kind of inspection-driven.
There was a cost to complete done with an inspection when the performance bond was set. So if I'm hearing that the board would like to have that updated at this time?
When was the last time they did that, Mary?
Was it 2012?
July of 2012. And then, like I mentioned, they are, so they estimated the items that they had identified, the $93,000 and then factored in a 20, almost a 20% contingency.
So in 2012, it calls out the final coat of asphalt needs to be installed, but all the utilities have been installed already. And so the cost to complete was set at that point. I mean, we certainly could go out and update it. That was why I asked the applicant if we needed to update it. But typically, when we update it, the applicants are looking for us to reduce the amount that we're holding.
Yeah, we're not looking for any reduction in the bond amount.
Oh, okay.
Just in order to file for building permit applications, we need it released from the covenant in advance. And then, yeah, coming back for any reduction in the bond amount certainly would have the planning board out there to go through it, bring back in the consultant to revisit the estimate.
I mean, I could ask Mr. Lanning to go back and do another inspection if you'd like, if that's, would make the board more comfortable. Or perhaps you'd like to release the units in part and then have the inspection done for an assurance. It's been three years.
I think we just need, I mean, it's just really the way, we've never released all the lots on a property without having an up-to-date, at least I haven't. You know, an up-to-date cost to complete. I would not be, I mean, if you wanted to release some of them now, but it.
What ones would you like to have released right now? You're not gonna get all of them.
And then I can put this back on the July 20th agenda.
One in 18 have signed agreements and then the, maybe one of the affordables. I mean, we, I'm sorry, Mary, when did you say you'd be back?
July, July 20th.
Okay, I mean, so one in 18 are, have actual signed agreements and are ready, you know, to file building permits. And then, then we can come back and do the balance.
Because we know what we're releasing.
Yeah.
You're requesting eight tonight.
Yeah, now.
We just gotta reduce it to one in 18 tonight.
Just so that, so that we can file the building permit.
Two of the six, and that's adequate for you to, till July 20th?
Tonight, yeah.
And that's sufficient?
Yep, and then we'll come back on the 20th, try and work with Nick to revisit the estimate and then ask the board to do the remaining at that time.
And can, on the timing of those two affordables, are they, you know, how are, what's the timing of those two versus the other four?
So the first one, yes.
You know, as far as construction goes and putting it on the market?
So we thought the first one would be by September of 16, so if we got the building permit application in, you know, the end of the summer, do the construction and then, I'm not sure exactly how long the marketing time with MCO, but then they would have their whole lottery process in, in marketing. And then complete that by the spring of 16. The second one would start probably as we get closer to closing on the first affordable. Then start the next one and have that be done.
And is the, is the development of the remaining lots not one in 18 and not those two affordable? Is that totally market-driven or do you build them prior to?
No, he tends to build when he has signed agreements.
Oh, okay. So that's kind of market, the timing is not?
Yeah, the affordable ones.
You're gonna go ahead?
We'll go ahead with it.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I guess what we, what we need is a motion to release lots one and lot 18 from the, was it the Form E covenant?
Yeah, I think I've so moved to make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we'll see you again in July.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Alright, so next on the agenda is the town of Hingham, 341 Main Street, also known as 10 Playground Road. A renovation of the recreation barn installation and parking area, improvements to traffic and pedestrian access, new utility service and associated improvements.
And I thought as, I'd like to make a disclosure statement. I was the, am still the planning board representative to the community preservation committee. And as such, I was the project manager on this project. And I supported the project with regarding, with regard to the CPC funding, which was approved at town meeting. It was also my understanding that it would be subject to the site plan review process. So I just wanted to share that with everybody in full disclosure.
Great. Any comments about that? Alright, Mr. Fanakis, would you be kind enough to tell us about your proposal?
Sure, thank you very much. Again, Roger Fanakis, town engineer, town of Hingham. We're seeking, well, before we do the site plan review process in association with the heritage museum slash cottage factory slash proposed recreation barn. The project itself came before the planning board in July 2013, July 22nd to be exact. At that time, we had sought a waiver associated with site plan that was connected to the building permit. The reason why we sought that at that time is because all the work was interior-related, structural work. There was no use anticipated, well, there was anticipated future use, but there was nothing associated with the actual work. So at this point, the funding has been made available through CPC to continue the project into its next phases, which will include repurposing the building such that it provides two bathrooms and a open floor plan to be used by the recreation department so that they can hold programs. But the, the main use, the main focus would be to provide the two bathrooms. And then we would consider the ancillary use would be probably the, the open floor plan. The building itself is only 2,000 square feet, the first floor. The second floor is also 2,000 square feet. It will not be used for anything other than storage, we think. So it'll be just the first floor. So again, the project is fully funded and we're before you to seek, seek your approval. With me today is Vicki Donlin, who's the chair of the rec department, Mark Thorell, who you probably all know as well, director of the rec department, and Carmen Hudson, who works with Cavanaro Consulting, consultants who we engage to help us with the design and permitting of the project. So we'll do our best to answer any of your questions, but at this time, maybe I can ask Carmen to come up and talk about the project a little bit.
Sure.
Be great.
Good evening. I don't know if it would be best for me to talk over there next to the plant so I can point?
You can take the mic with you. Or move the station.
I might have to sing though. Thank you so much. Wonderful being a part of a team and have things move for you. So, good evening once again for the record, Carmen Hudson from Cavanaro Consulting. What we worked on with Roger, Vicki, and Mark was to provide enough parking for the proposed use, which it's, the building itself is going to provide 54 seats altogether. So at one parking space per three seats, we're providing a total of 18 new parking spaces in the new parking area. The, presently, there are a couple handicap spaces which are next to the playground area. And there is a gravel parking area that doesn't have any parking spaces assigned. So we did not include any of those existing parking spaces into our calculations. One thing that we are proposing to do is to widen the existing driveway, which is a paved driveway in front of the headhouse of the recreational house. It's going to be now 24 feet in width. That is in order to allow easy two-way traffic in front of the building. However, as one enters the, the property today, coming from the fire station, one would make a right into the parking area, and this is just a one-way traffic. The parking area itself will consist of recycled material. So it's more like a gravel driveway than a paved driveway. However, in our stormwater calculations, we conservatively modeled this area as a paved parking area. So the traffic would flow in one direction and then go around behind the existing gravel parking area. Where currently, even though it's not assigned currently, cars parked diagonally, there's a sign that says, you know, diagonal parking only. And we're proposing to also widen the paved driveway that is behind the gravel parking area. Something else that we're proposing to do is grading. And the primary purpose of this grading is in order to provide accessible, an accessible way from the existing handicap parking spaces to the building. And we're providing a ramp also to make that building accessible. So therefore, the, the area around the handicap parking spaces and going towards the ramp, we're keeping a 2% slope, so this area will be shallow. Therefore, continuing the, the traffic pattern, one way going across the new parking area, one way going around the building, and then as one approaches the existing driveway that leads to the fire station, it's a two-way driveway. We're also trying to provide more accessibility for pedestrians. There is going to be a sidewalk on one side of the proposed parking lot. And there's also going to be a small sidewalk with steps going up to the building and a sidewalk that will go from one entrance of the building to the ramp on the other side. Stormwater-wise, again, we calculated, we modeled the parking area to be a paved parking area and even assuming that, which is extremely conservative. This flow goes towards an existing low area, and the material in that low area is medium or coarse sand. So it really just percolates into the ground during the 100-year storm, assuming that all of this is paved, which it isn't. It didn't even reach the outlet pipe. The only reason why I proposed an outlet pipe there was since we were going to disturb this, why not? You know, let's, let's put a pipe there above the 100-year storm elevation. However, after talking with Abby, because this other end of the pipe would be located within the 100-foot buffer zone to isolate a vegetated wetland, she asked that we remove it so that we can simply move forward with an RDA instead of a full notice of intent. And we agreed to do that since it's not really needed. So even though it's shown here, it is not being proposed anymore. And I believe that pretty much covers everything. If there are any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
I just had a couple on the, on the parking. Are the diagonal spaces signed or is there a wheel stop so people know that they're, you know, kind of in the right sequence? They know it's diagonal parking, but just to make sure there are 20 spaces achievable, is there a way to kind of lay it out such that people know where to put the cars? Because if it's gravel, you probably won't be striping it.
No, of course, we can do the curb stops.
Yep.
Return our children.
And we help to ready each spot. That's actually a good idea.
And the handicap spaces, are they, where they are currently now, right near the entrance and the sliding door on the building? So you'd have one or two spaces for handicap?
There are two currently.
Two handicaps?
And we will maintain the two. We're just making them a little bit wider so that they abide by the required size.
And is, would there be any lighting required for the parking area or is it, is it the building lighting or?
No, as a matter of fact, there will be some new lighting. We are proposing a total of three posts. We're trying to minimize the light shedding outside of the parking area itself. So there will be three posts. And there will also be some lighting on the building. We're proposing three, two new pendant lights on one side of the building. That is, where would this be? Facing the new parking area and then one in the middle over here, which is facing that wetland. And one over here on this side, which is facing the playground.
Did you determine where the septic's going at?
Well, we did. We actually performed some test bids. They were right here and that is, that is where we're proposing, or we're going to propose a septic system to be. And since we were at it, we also conducted a test bid there and we found exactly the same really great material.
So we've done all the test bidding associated with putting a septic system here. There's a sewer line that exists that's outside the actual district, but we're talking to the MWRA to see if there's an opportunity to tie into that sewer line. And if the timing works such that we can tie into a sewer line, we're gonna tie into the sewer line versus putting a septic system. And it's just a timing question.
So I have just a question, maybe backing up a little bit from the specifics of this plan. I opened this and I thought, oh, is this a continuation, you know, what? But now you reminded us that you were here in 2013 for a waiver because really it was just gonna be restoring the building. And now, the letter that Vicki Donlin sent us on June 17th says 50, you know, that there's gonna be 50 participants in the school year, 50 participants in the summer, June. And that sounds great, but that was not before us when you were here the last time, was it?
No.
No, okay. So I just wanted to make sure. So it's, because I sat here a lot for the fire station hearings and we talked a lot about the impact on the roadway. And we actually talked about the impact of the fire station project on this property. I don't understand how that whole proj, this project, I went back there tonight to look at it and I was just shocked that it's all been done already. Like how, where are we? Like, does, shouldn't we be talking about the impact of the fire station on this level of operation when we spent so much time talking about it before? And how does all of a sudden, this incredibly, maybe great use, but it's a pretty dramatic change in use on that shared driveway just become about the parking lot, which looks like it's already built, so I don't know, like, we don't really operate that way either. How did this all happen?
In terms of the, the actual project being put forward?
Roger, we're kind of, I feel like we're kind of caught off guard here a little bit.
Okay. So the proponents came to the CPC for funding for a project that they'd like to see develop, their proponents did. This is the project that they want, so I'm helping them sort of facilitate that.
Right.
They want to repurpose a building that's currently used for storage, not very efficiently used for storage. There's a golf cart, I mean, golf, I'm sorry, a golf cart and some other very minor things stored in the building. There's always been a desire, I understand from the recreation department and from other folks that we've heard, that they want to see bathrooms available at that location.
Right.
Right now, if you want to use a bathroom, if you're using Cronin Fields, I really don't even know. You have to go to town hall? So you walk to town hall. So if you have a five-year-old at the playground right now, you walk across the fields to town hall. So in terms of the desire to do that, the proponents came before the CPC, who I assist with, with Gary on other projects, to sort of move this, put this project before town meeting for funding. Without the funding, we don't, we, it's sort of a academic discussion, I think. That funding came in place. With respect to the parking lot, and I, I think I know where you're going, with the parking lot itself, that was a sort of mea culpa. What we ended up with is an opportunity to save the town. Two things. One is we had to be, we needed to be able to get in there and do the test bidding that, that, that we just discussed. We just, Carmen just discussed. Two, there was an opportunity to save the town, about $30,000 and sort of doing the work now versus later. So in that sense, I apologize. We shouldn't have, we shouldn't have done that from a timing standpoint. The intent was good, I think, but the, the execution was poor, but on my part. But the, in terms of how the project got here, there was a tremendous amount of discussion around. I mean, it happened, it was, but it was one of the articles, a town meeting warrant article, about the particular use. Went before advisory, went before, you know, CPC.
That's true.
Yeah.
But going back there now. But going back there now, no matter what town meeting does, a project of this magnitude still comes to
Understood.
The planning board, site plan review
Yes.
For an A3, for just what's the impact on the neighbors, on the town,
Sure.
On the roadway, on all of those things, and yet this project is under construction.
Not, no, it's not under construction. The only thing that happened, Judy, was just the parking lot. There's no, the building, it's, the only thing that's happened inside the building is what was discussed during the site plan review, where we, I'm sorry, we received waiver from the site plan review. I'd be happy to take you out there. There's, everything that Mark had in the building before is still inside the building. There is no, it was just the structural work that was done inside the building. Nothing else has taken place.
So, so if we are where we are now, how do we consider the impact of that use on Playground Road in your, can you talk a little bit about that, sort of the volume of traffic, the times of day?
Sure.
And how it fits in to?
It's fire station way?
Oh, right. It's, sorry, it's fire station drive, fire station.
Sure. So actually, let me sort of nip away at that one at a time. The, with respect to the traffic, one of the things we looked at, I looked at it today, and we actually talked to John Morgan, who you all know, traffic engineers, determined the traffic impact associated with a project like this. We looked at the ITI Institute for Traffic Engineers, and what they'd say is based on the square footage, we developed the trips, peak trips associated with the project. 2,000 square feet ended up being three trips, 1.45 per thousand square feet. Obviously, that's not, that's not, you know, intuitively, it doesn't work here. We know it's going to be more than that. So in talking to John, what we found was that, you know, you begin to apply some common sense, which includes what the prospective use is going to be, the occupancy, the programming, the timing between the program, and then the size of the parking needs associated with that. So again, in talking to John, the traffic engineer, you know, we anticipated that per program, at the very worst-case scenario, you were going to, you were looking at 30 trips in his, in his estimation. And if you'd like, we can certainly speak to John and a different, or traffic engineer, and develop some of that information by way of a memo or something else. But there was no cut, in sort of fast way to sort of come up with a trip generation for this particular project. The other question, Judy, was, I'm sorry, there was the traffic.
Well, the fire depart, the fire station, kind of, have you, has the chief weighed in on this increased use and the hours of programming, just because you share the driveway with them?
He hasn't, but we can provide something from the chief, a memo or something, unless you've spoken to the chief.
Well, if I may, part of it, so I did provide the application to health and fire and the building commissioner. I did not hear from the chief with regard to the use. I did talk to Dave Dampstra today, who's going to generate comments for the board. You'll have them for your next meeting. And his main comment, which I asked him to put in writing so that Roger and everyone can see it, is that he is concerned about just being sure that people know where to get into that site, and he asked, are we going to call the site 341 Main Street or 10 Playground Road? And he's going to talk to Roger about it.
Fire station.
Fire station.
So he's concerned that, at that stop sign where, I mean, on our records, it's called 10 Playground Road, but Dave Dampstra suggested at that stop sign, right at Main Street, where you're going out and you see the stop sign, perhaps the back face of it could be labeled 341 Main Street, so that people trying to find the location know this is where you turn, or some better kind of signage. And that was his main comment. He didn't speak to usage, perhaps Roger can reach out to the chief on that.
We can do that. But I will, I will say that the chief is aware 100% of the proposed project, but in terms of a more detailed comment from him, or the fire prevention officer that talks about any specific comments, it's not like he doesn't know that this is happening. But I think maybe something that's a little more formal would be suitable at this juncture.
Yeah, and if there are 50 kids and the parking projection turns out that every parent drives their own child, and they want to walk them to the door, and the 18 spaces aren't enough, because maybe there's an overlap in time or something, and people start parking along the roadway, you know, what's the provision for that? So, so just a little bit, I mean, Roger, you've been to thousands of these hearings.
Yeah.
Just a little bit of a conversation about this. It's not like it's, oh, yeah, just a couple of kids running in there.
Yeah, just, just answer that question, I'll just, I think, I don't think that the presumption with this, that this was just sort of, just going to, just sort of going to happen. I think that a lot of the projects that you're comparing this to are probably a little different than this particular project. We're talking, I mean, 50, 50 spots, 50 occupancies, 50 occupants, occupants are, is certainly the worst-case scenario, but it's a 2,000-square-foot building, and it, not that it doesn't have any bearing, doesn't warrant sort of analysis, it does, but this is just the first introduction to the planning board regarding this project. And I have been to a lot of these meetings, and I've seen a lot of me, projects introduced the same way, where the applicants have come away with questions, comments from the planning board, comments from the fire, I know, because I write a lot of those comments myself. So the process itself, do we have a fully washed-out sort of vetted project yet? No, this is your first look at this particular project, and we were walking your comments and concerns.
That sounds good.
Okay. If the board would like to.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing to answer your question, because it's important to me. Vicki Donlin, Recreation Chair, 12 Floret Circle. We did meet with the chief of the fire and of the police chief. Mary was there, Conservation was there, they were all there, and this, do you remember that meeting? I wish I had a date for that meeting. Andrea was there, as I said, every department was there, so that we could socialize, so we could discuss the safety issue, and the fire chief was behind it 100% with the idea that people would be using that road for the playground, which they are doing now. So this really, I wanted to be very careful in letting you know. One of the other issues that was important to me is the fact that the playground right now, as we're sitting right this minute, does not have an address. Having this building redone and to a multipurpose, this building, this area will now have an address of its own, so if there's an emergency on the playground or at the rec barn, the fire department will come right to the spot of where the emergency is. As of right today, if an emergency were to happen on the playground, they come to the front of town hall, because there isn't an official address out there. So this was all discussed very clearly, and I apologize for not remembering the date. And again, our previous meeting with planning board had a lot to do with bathrooms. I totally understand that. But as CPC understood, it was a two-phase program, and when we met with you all last time, we had received the funding for, or we were going for the funding, I guess is more appropriate, for the bathrooms. But it was always in your packet, and maybe not as focused as perhaps you would have liked it to have been, that this was a two-process, and we were going to, you know, create the refurbishing and the multipurpose room inside. So, but I appreciate your question. I just wanted to make sure that you were well aware that the fire chief was included in all our conversations with this.
Well, in terms of change, and all the buildings grow and all of that, my surprise here was going there to see what I thought looked like construction started, and we hadn't really gone through this step yet.
No, I totally understand. I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that, that you understood that we were very careful in making sure, safety, this is recreation, safety number one in our minds for this whole project. So thank you.
I think also, speaking through the process, that this and several other projects have gone through, through the CPC. This has been a four-part process, and the initial three phases of this process had to do with stabilization of the structure and renovations inside of the structure, but the actual use of the primary recreation room hadn't been defined at those early stages. It was defined at the last stage and just approved this year. So I think that's where some of the confusion came into this. But I think also, we as the board want to make sure that all the projects go through the same process. So all of the CPC projects involving parking are going through site plan review, like the Heritage Center, and this is similar, so this will go through the same process too.
All right. Having thought about all that, to the applicant, so there's an issue here about the ownership of the land, part of it being owned by the selectmen, some by the Recreation Commission. So perhaps for our next meeting, there could be some type of memorandum of understanding, or if you have some other solution?
Just with a quick update, we did, Thursday night, the Board of Selectmen did vote, vote to authorize the land for the use as you see it here, and the Recreation Commission also voted to authorize the use as you see before you right now. So we have those two documents. Don't know, maybe, did you get those? I think Betty was supposed to call you.
I didn't. Well, just to clarify, so I think that there's a couple, it's just semantics. I'm not sure, I think the selectmen authorized the town administrator to sign the application for the project, and whether or not there was an MOU, or the details of the MOU were worked out, I'm not privy to that. But I do know there was a favorable vote at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I understand that they're supportive of the application. In fact, Betty Foley asked me if I had the application form for the town administrator to sign, but I would note that, I think the application form should probably list the selectman's parcel address on it, that zero off Main Street parcel, you know, because I don't, I'm not sure where, but part of the parking lot is on the selectman's property, and maybe you can show the planning board, but I think to have the town administrator sign the application form too, which lists all the properties involved, and then certainly, I know that letter's forthcoming, but I don't have it yet. But I mean, we know it's coming.
What do board members think, I mean, should the stormwater be reviewed by peer consultant, and then are we also looking, should this be an A3?
Do we have comparable projects where we have not done a drainage?
No, I mean, most recently, we had the Heritage Museum, which was actually a smaller parking lot, and they did a full review. So I think that of, you know, my suggestion for the planning board is to most critically ensure that all the projects meet the same standards for stormwater, and that's something that I cannot do for you. If the board would like me to, you know, do the other portions of the peer review, I certainly can do that. But stormwater, you typically have that peer reviewed, and then you get a consistent analysis.
Right. And, and the A3?
So for the planning board to decide about the A3, your parking standard is one space per three, and let me just read it to you, and then you have the staff that are involved. We did hear tonight, though, that there are spaces, existing spaces along that gravel area that aren't included in the count, but are on site. So we're looking at Yeah, please, please do.
We have to remember, there's still the playground there, so that the parking spaces now are being used by the playground, and this is the reason for the parking lot. So we anticipate the playground to continue use, so the numbers for the parking lot are clearly for the use of the building and not, you know, the playground. We're not trying to anticipate any change in, in what's needed. So I want to make sure that they're separate issues. Thank you.
So your parking calculation, parking requirement for recreational use is one space per three persons at capacity use? Reminding the board that this site is going to be used by the rec, or could be used by elder services, which I think is great, and I, I think that should be on the record. So you have the maximum number of students is 50, and then four instructors, and there's 18 spaces being proposed?
May I approach?
Yeah, please.
Mark Terrell, Director of Recreation. So the way we came up with that calculation is really a max case scenario, where we kind of said, okay, if we have the divider wall up and kind of two small classrooms, worst-case scenario is we're looking at 25 customers in each classroom with possibly two instructors in each classroom. That's where we kind of came up with that max number. Generally speaking, I would imagine 90% of the time, we look at the barn, what, one-floor usage as one, one room, typically between 10 and 20 students in it. You know, rare circumstances, we have back-to-back classes, say, that are of the same type, fitness or dance, where you could kind of have a simple divider wall up and have that kind of max capacity. So we really based it off of, you know, the most people we could ever envision in there at one time. But generally speaking, I think we would utilize the rec barn for one classroom, or one studio, or one fitness class, or one dance class, generally speaking. But we do like the ability to create the two studios if need be, to kind of provide us the flexibility.
So Mark, on the parking table, if you have 50 people, and it's one per three, that's 18, 19 spaces plus the two handicaps, so that's 20 spaces. Are there any spaces required for the playground access at this point? That would be required in this parking area, or is that provided?
Well, for what's there now is, is what's existed now in the last, since the playground has been built, so what's been there now is kind of catering to the residents who are using the playground or the tennis court, so it's, I don't think that's going to change at all.
Did, did we get dimensions of the parking?
We don't have, you know, drawn into the plan, but we are going to get revised plans.
Well, you do need revised plans because of the situation with the pipe. I can provide dimensions if you would like, but
Please.
Just to mention to the
Oh, I'm sorry, Carmen, can you come up to the microphone, please?
Sorry. Right now, I could just scale the length, but the aisle width is 22 feet in each one, so if you were to go perpendicularly to the edge of the parking, it's 16 feet on either side, so 32, 52, 54 feet, that's the width, and I could measure the length, but I'd be happy to include those dimensions when I provide the revised plans.
Is nine by 20?
They're actually longer than that, and that is just standard practice. Exactly. I mean, there's nothing in your regulations that requires them to be longer, but we provide longer parking spaces, just because it's standard practice. So right now, each space is about 22 and a half feet in length, and they are nine and a half, nine and a half feet in width. So your parallel parking space is 22 feet, your regular space is 20 feet. This is actually even longer than a parallel parking space. We could make them smaller, it's just standard practice.
And the aisle width, you said, is 13?
No, the aisle width is actually 22.
But it's a one-way drive?
It's a one-way drive, yes. We could make it, again, you know, less wide. We're just trying to
For the backing up of the cars?
Yeah, I mean, they could do with the 14 feet, but since there was the space, we thought, you know, to, just to provide more ease to it.
So what kind of surface is it? Because typically, with, like you said, with a, with an impervious surface, we would rather you not make something bigger than it needs to be, but you said it's not an impervious surface. So what kind of surface is it?
Actually, since you've driven there, I think it's just about the same surface that it was proposed, right, that recycle materials, which is dirt primarily?
The same thing that's on Ward Street, at the athletic, it's the same approach that was taken at the Ward Street Fields. That material, it's a, it's a reclaimed pavement borrow, which is just, it's a, it's still a gravelly material, but it's not paved, so it does have an infiltration associated with it, where pavement is completely not, you know.
It's a free-draining material, but we couldn't stripe it, so it probably makes sense to make the spaces a little bigger
Right.
Because people won't know where they are in a space
Correct.
As clearly with the stripe.
Correct, yeah.
How will they know where they are? Do you have
Wheel stops.
We would have to have curb stops.
Curb stops. And just one question, as it relates to the A3, if we're, if the proposed parking lot now meets the requirements associated with the zoning bylaws for parking, in terms of triggering an A3, what would, what would be the trigger for that, if you're meeting the requirements for the parking?
Well, that's what the board's determining, is if you have enough parking, and if you're meeting the dimensional requirements, and if you do, then you wouldn't require that, but that's what the boards, that's why they're asking you these questions.
The use is specific to this site, are the renovated building with The use specific to this site are the renovated building with the new central room and the toilet facilities, which is about 50 people. And then I guess the question I would have, are there ancillary uses that also use the site? That would be the playground that would have an impact on the size of parking provided, so that if you had events in the rec building and you also had the playground demand, is there enough parking to accommodate that without a problem?
That is why we're actually not touching the existing parking and not counting on the existing parking when we created the new parking area. So anything that is currently taking place, well, continue taking place. The only difference, however, is that there will be more space to back out of the existing, you know, angled parking spaces in the gravel parking area. However, where people park right now to use those existing uses, such as the playground, you know, a little bit towards one end of the site, will still be available, only in a better form. So that's why we're providing the 18 parking spaces for the proposed use. So these parking spaces really have nothing to do with anything that's existing.
So all the circulation will be maintained, and all the existing spaces will be maintained, and anything that's new won't preclude the use of those?
Exactly.
I see what you're doing.
Exactly.
Just one...
Fire truck turning template through there?
I did not.
But you did?
And just one more point, Gary, on your question, is that for the last two weeks in June and then July and August, we really wouldn't be taking up any parking. And the reason is, for our playground and preschool program, the six to 12-year-old kids get dropped off at Burr Road, and the little guys, four and five-year-olds, get dropped off at Haley Field. And from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, the Hingham Rec Barn would be used for arts and crafts, primarily for our in-house summer camp. So potentially, you could see that the playground and tennis courts get used the most, probably in those, in the 10 hottest weeks in the summer. And so we wouldn't be using up any parking for the rec barn and could potentially be spill-over parking if those spots were filled up. So it could help.
And so even though this is a publicly-owned facility, you have an active daily control over the programming and the use of the facility, so the parking balance can be controlled by your management of it. So that's, it's not a passive parking situation, it's somewhat monitored.
Should we get a use table or something?
Yeah, I think we should, just to quantify it.
Okay, is that something you can get for us? Showing us when the park is going to occur and how many people are going to be there in the hours? Do you have any questions, Judy, or should I ask the public? Members of the public, anybody like to be heard at this time? Would you please step up to the microphone and identify yourself?
Liz Comrack, 340 Main Street. I think the confusion about the address is that the Playground Road is actually chained off when you get up there, so that the access would be on, for the, by the firehouse. I think my only comment, I'm glad that I clarified the number of spaces and so forth, and my kids were all counselors at the rec, so it's a great program. My one concern is on the drop-offs, is once they get back out onto Main Street, I live right across the street, and it is a terrible intersection there. And I think that the town should say that you have to make a right turn only coming out of that street. Just for safety, and particularly since there's going to be more use, maybe up to 30 kids and parents, besides the traffic to the playground as a safety issue. It should be a right-hand only coming out of there, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Hi, Kate Boland, 338 Main Street. Just, I think it was great that you've talked to conservation and everything, but I will say is, when you walk back there, I don't know if Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Tondorf-Dick have gone back there, or we would invite anybody in town to drive back down there. When you walk and you see, how many trees did you take out, would you say? You walk out there and you're like, hmm, this is something coming to the town, but it's already done. It is huge, it looks really big. And I think you're going to put, I just want to clarify, Liz and I were disagreeing, it's 18 parking spaces for that parking lot? Great. It just looks huge. And I was just walking my dog back there, and I was like, whoa, what happened here? And then I just happened to get the email today, in my private email after work, and I was surprised that, oh, it's coming before them, but it's already done. So that was a huge disappointment, I have to say, because it's, the traffic is horrific getting out of there. The other thing is, I just wanted to say, I did support the CPC every time, voted for it. I'm looking forward to it, I think it's a great use, and I totally support the project. But I was really surprised that it's already done before you're coming before planning board.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else. So...
When would this be continued, Jill?
We talking July 20, Mary?
It's the board's discretion, but July 20th is the next meeting that, I mean, you have another meeting next Monday, but I don't think you could have it done by then, and plus, that's a full agenda.
My personal feeling is that I would rather hold off the July 20th on the A3 decision. I think we do need the drainage, the peer review on the drainage, but on the A3, I would love for Sarah to weigh in on that, because she has very strong feelings about dimensions of parking lots. And I think, you know, I think the number of spaces sounds perfectly fine, it's really the dimensional requirements and the number of trees that came down and the sort of vegetation in the area that I think that she, I would rather have her be part of the discussion.
Gary, thoughts?
I'd like to go and visit it, so, and I would welcome having Sarah's input, too. But I'd like to go and take a look.
So I'm hearing that the board is not making a decision on whether or not an A3 is required, and, which is fine. And I'm hearing that you want to continue it to your meeting of July 20th, and so that would allow time...
Is that what we're talking about, July 20? Yeah?
So that would allow time for the stormwater to be reviewed?
What do you want to know now, whether you want an A3 or if I could do it if you want?
It's the board's, I mean, it's the board's discretion, we have, it's a public hearing. So...
But we could do it at the same time if it were...
If we advertised it as though you were going to have it, technically, their dimensional requirements are half a foot larger on their parking space in each direction, very minor, and it's for safety, technically.
But the one-way driveway is supposed to be 12 feet and it's 20 feet?
And they're exceeding that a little bit. So it's not strict, but they need to have the quint turnaround, and we don't have that turning template in front of us for the fire truck. So it's the board's discretion, it's a town project. If you'd like to be transparent, we could advertise a hearing.
Is there enough time to get it done by, to get it noticed by July 20?
If I know, right, the deadline for the July 20th meeting, I have to have the ad drafted this week.
Carmen? Want to step up to the microphone?
We can certainly make changes to the proposed parking area. We thought that if we just made it more comfortable, would be better. However, if it's better to have it smaller, we can certainly make the changes to that. I think the purpose is to provide exactly what the parking spaces are needed, so we can make the changes to the proposed, you know, parking area accordingly in order to avoid having to file for a special permit A3.
I think what the planning board's saying is that if they want to grant you to deviate from what's required, the way they do that is through an A3. I don't hear them saying that they necessarily are opposed to or have a position on it, they just want to have the flexibility to hear from Sarah and then also accommodate what you're asking for.
If we don't advertise this for July 20th, you're going to be really set back.
Mm-hmm. I just, I think it was a concern to have the process keep on going, and maybe just changes to the design, since we're going to propose, you know, provide a revised site plan would be sufficient.
I mean, you will be back on the 20th for the site plan anyway. So it's...
And the drainage review. So would it really set it, the timing, the timing wouldn't really change if we noticed the A3 now?
Okay.
We could do all of it on the 20th.
All right.
Any questions, certainly? The A3 is what's necessary, is just, I'd just ask, in terms of the A3 itself, what on the project is, would we say is triggering the actual A3? What's the catalyst for that? We're not asking for any waiver with respect to the quantity of parking, we're not asking for any more.
Are you strictly following the dimensional requirements?
Absolutely, 100%, yeah.
With the one-way driveway with 12 feet?
Minimum, yep.
Okay. And the parking spaces are nine feet by 20?
Yep.
Without overhang?
Yep, actually 22.
Well, and as part of site plan review, we could ostensibly ask that you comply with the number of trees for this new parking?
Sure.
Lot, which I don't, I don't think you want a waiver from, right?
No, we don't, actually. Carmen's already included two trees here and here, but if you wanted more trees, we could certainly do that as part of the site plan review. I think I've just, I think with respect to the A3, we're just asking what's triggering the A3.
I mean, I'm comfortable with it only because they do have the right, they have all the space and the number of lots, but I would like the conversation about the material and the drainage and the trees and all of that to continue. So if we can do that outside of the A3, that's fine with me.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I concur on that, too. Because I think, I like the current dimensions they've provided, even if it's a little bit more than the minimum, just because it's pervious and I think it's safer. It's a better plan. If it were paved, I would say you could go back to the minimum, but since it's not paved with an impervious rigid pavement, I think it needs some flexibility. But I would like to continue all the other site plan review aspects if we could.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from the planning board is that you want to continue this to the meeting of July 20th. And so that night, you already have, at 8 o'clock, you have an A3 in-site plan for the Volvo Village advertised. And I was thinking that would probably take you 45 minutes.
What's at 7?
At 7 to 8, you have a Climate Change and Adaptability Joint Meeting with Concom. It's the final report on that project, which is required as part of the grant. So my question for the board is, do you want to do this at 8:45 on July 20th, or do you think half an hour is enough for Volvo Village for a site plan in an A3?
Where's Volvo Village?
Right across from 99, it's 425 Lincoln.
I'd do the 45.
So we could schedule this for 8:45 on Monday, July 20th?
That's what I'd do.
Is that acceptable to the applicant?
How about 6:30?
That's the discretion of the board.
I do.
If you can be here.
It's tough for you. It's hard for me to get here for 6:30.
July 20th, I have Sarah, I don't, she's out of school.
My chauffeur.
I have Gary, Walter, and Judy.
5:45 gets in at 6:18 and just plonk right over.
Question of getting there, getting out before then.
We have a full agenda that night, so if you could start at 6:30, that'd be great.
We'll try, put it on, we'll try.
6:30 better? Is that better for you, too?
I think it's better for everybody, let's face it.
Yeah, you have five projects on that night, so that's a big agenda for the board.
Yep.
I'm not using the microphone, so... But for the drainage review, I already provided hydrocarct calculations, actually using this as pavement. Should I just go through all the standards and who should I address them to?
So we will, I can provide what you have to our peer review engineer.
Will be John Chessia?
It will be John Chessia, and I can have him talk directly to you to try to minimize the back and forth, if that makes it easier.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I know he already looked at it, and he only mentioned to me one thing that he thought he might need.
Okay.
So it was pretty straightforward, so...
It is.
So I can just, instead of you going and doing a great deal of work and then talking to him, if it's a board's pleasure, we can just figure this out offline.
Okay, great. Yeah, regarding, just because I didn't get to say anything regarding the trees, there is a provision in your bylaw that says that, it's regarding screening when there's parking. So if there, if there is a buffer around the parking, then there wouldn't be a need to provide additional trees. However, of course, there is a buffer right now, because there are trees everywhere, but we're also providing the, as if it had no buffer, the two trees that would be required if there was no vegetative buffer around. So we have already addressed that, but...
We have the canopy trees provided in the current.
Yes, in the current site plan, there are two. So just also to have some guidance as to what to include on the revised site plan prior to the 20th. So the trees are all set. I was just simply going to remove that pipe, and then if John Chessia had anything else that he would like us...
And you should show the property lines?
Okay, so I can show the property boundaries, because yes, there's the Board of Selectmen and the two Recreation, and then the Fire Department over here, so I can show all the interior property boundaries.
And then I would just take a look at section I-1, for the submittal requirements. There's a couple of other things that I noticed that we didn't have. I don't have a list with me now, but we could talk about it or just read through that and just take a look and make sure that we have all of that.
Okay, so I-1, 4?
Yep, the submittal requirements, it's on page eight of the bylaw...
Okay.
For site plan review.
Thank you.
Do we need a request for continuance, Mary?
No, you don't need an extension, as long as you're all in agreement, because you're still within your original timeframe. And if we could just ask for just the tweaked application form with the Board of Selectmen parcel listed on it, that'd be super.
Okay, so... So the map and law for the Board of Selectmen's parcel and a signature from them, or is that something that is...
We can get the signature, it's already been authorized. Just for the file, it's a formality, but all the parcels that are subject to the application should be listed. So you could add zero off Main Street, AKA 81-0-53 on the form. That's this, that's this.
If you can just show the property line?
Okay.
And just make it clear where the Selectmen's land is and where this is, so they know what land is on, you know, what work is on each one.
Okay, so would be helpful. And the special permit A3, is that not going to be then?
Nope, the board does not need. So no, we don't need a formal request, because you're within your timeframe. So as long as it's okay with the applicant.
We'll see you in July.
Thank you.
All right, so before we close out, I have a question. June 1, needed? Anybody's had a chance to look at it?
I only had a chance to look at the minutes for June 1, and I'm ready to shoot that way.
All right, a second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? That's a wonderful thing. Do we have any other business, Mary?
Thank you very much. Did we have any other business, Dolores? You have a busy meeting, just for the record, a big meeting next week, but no, we have no other business, so we could adjourn, certainly.
We have a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.